Teresa. Tabe. Espera, deja que yo... Good. Good evening, welcome everybody. If anybody need the translation services, we have it available in the back. Si alguien, buenas noches a todos. Si alguien necesita las, los servicios de traducción, eh, lo tenemos en el, en el, en la parte de atrás. Please, can you bring two, two of those equipments for the clerk and councillor? I mean, if somebody is gonna speak in Spanish, then you will ask for it. So if anybody need those services, they are on the back. Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting for the Lawrence City Council. Today is Tuesday, March eighteen, twenty twenty-five. Pursuant to chapter twenty of the Act of Twenty Twenty-two, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person, in the city council chambers and remotely. The Zoom link was provided to anybody that requested through the city clerk's office. This meeting is both, eh, is transmitted also through the YouTube page and is being shared on the Facebook. Madam Claire, please call the hall.
Councillor Levy.
Present.
Councillor LaPlante.
Present.
Councillor Luzon. Councillor Del Rosario.
Present.
Councillor Santiago.
Present.
Councillor Marmel.
Present.
Councillor Reyes.
Present.
Council Vice President Infante. Council President Rodriguez.
Present.
Please join me for a moment of silence. Now, join me for the pledge of allegiance. We are proceeding with public participation. Public participation rules are as follows. You're gonna have two and a half minutes to speak on any item topic that you, eh, that you desire. At the two-minute mark, you're gonna hear a beep or sounds or some type of, something that indicate that you still have thirty seconds to speak. Eh, please refer to this council as a whole, not to any individual councillors. We have a list, eh, that it was available for anybody that wanted to write their names. The first person that we have here on the list is H. Mali. Name and address for the record, please.
Homo Yunmali fifty-three Chester Street. Good evening, honorable members. We, the citizens, are united to support Lawrence Police Officers Union. Lawrence Police with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Chief Bonilla, doing excellent job to protect our citizen. Lawrence Police Officers, thank you for making Lawrence a safe city. Million thanks to our DPW employees' leadership for making Lawrence is a beautiful city because of your hard work. We support DPW Union. Inspection Department employees, thank you for excellent job. We support your union. We must hire more inspector. Lawrence Public School with the impeccable leadership by Honorable Superintendent Ralph Guerrero, one of the best superintendent in the history of Lawrence, on the way to become the best public school in the nation. Lawrence Teachers, thank you for gift of best education for the children of Lawrence. We support Lawrence Teachers Union. Lawrence one city under God. We are proud to support our veterans. Thank you for your sacrifices. Thank you for your service. We respectfully request to hire two assistants to vacant position for veterans' office. We respectfully request as of you, of this council, to have the Lawrence, Lawrence Commission on Elders. Laurentian are the champion of the support of union from our, our police officers' union to brave firefighter, teachers' union and right of union for firefighters. We have the Commission on the Elder. Lawrence always is strong. Lawrence always unite. We pray for the safety of all police officers. This thin blue line, this best example, protect and serve Lawrence Police. Thank you for excellent job. We are proud to support Lawrence Police Union.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Richard Russell, Councillor Russell. Name and address for the record, please.
Top of the evening to all you wannabe Irish councillors. I'm Richard Russell, thirty-four Cross Street, and I saw all but two of yous at last Friday's Irish shenanigans at the Elks Club. The good news, I've survived four corned beef and cabbage meals at various events. Interesting news first. The city's IT department has said that nothing has emanated from any of the city's email addresses that may have helped precipitate my deletion from Facebook. I am still convinced that my deletion was politically motivated. Unfortunately, there are no writs of habeas corpus for so, for social media issues. I am still waiting for one last, at the present time, public record request as to why I wasn't chosen to be on the Citizens Advisory Committee for the next police chief. Why do I consider myself worthy to be on that selection group? Just remember that during my brief tenure as a councillor at large, I was on the personnel committee. Eh, also, rumor has it that one committee member resigned. Will that person be replaced? Or is the selection committee nothing but a farce created to appease the voters of Lawrence? That was quite a turnout last Tuesday night at the meeting regarding the parking meter of vultures in their antics. Lots of questions were asked and probably lots of time before any answers are offered, if they are ever offered. It was good to see one city councillor go off on the vulture enterprise. There were so many other questions that deserved to be answered. One question not asked was, do the vultures get notified electronically that parking time is ready to expire on a vehicle so they can pounce on the vehicle and write a ticket? Next, when will Agenda Item four sixty-six twenty-three be implemented? Last April, money was to be taken from the FY twenty-five budget for correcting these egregious mistakes on several monuments. Now supposedly, we have a spending freeze in place. It's one thing for the council to talk the talk, but what I wanna know is who walked the walk with the money? Lastly, as an FYI, the next council meeting will be on April Fool's Day, which ironically is the same day that nomination papers become available for the next municipal election process. Coincidence? You make the call. As always, thank you for the time.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Andrew Provacal. Name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Andrew Provenzal. I live at one forty-one Amesbury Street in Lawrence. I am proud to say that I was born in this city. Um, I have a few things that I would like to address. The first one is that I am scared crapless to walk out my front door. I live in a high-rise right behind the high school. Every time I walk out that front door, I'm afraid of getting hit by a car because the, because the cars drive up that street way too fast. There isn't a speed limit on that road and I'm afraid of getting clipped. I walk, I do not drive. That's my first issue. Um, the second issue I have is with the voting districts. I live right near the high school. There is a voting booth there, the old high school. The problem is I have to walk all the way over almost by the hospital to vote, when I used to vote over at Mary Immaculate. What I'd like to know is why am I voting all the way on Summer Street when I voted on, um, Mary Immaculate, when I should be voting at the high school? Why is Amesbury Street having to walk all the way to the other side of the city? It makes no sense. The other, the other thing I wanna implore is that you fund the public library a little more. They're having to close down floors because they don't have enough staff to operate. As a patron of the public library since I was a child, I would really find it a travesty if they, if, if, if there is one day they would actually have to close their doors. It would be a travesty to the city and the children within it. So if you could find it in your hearts to fund the library a little more, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you. Uh, my sister has a few words. I'll leave the rest to her.
Is she, she's part of the list? Okay, you can, you can continue, yeah.
Oh, one other thing, we do need to fund more walking police.
More B cops, more, uh, bike cops, uh, and more grants for black-owned businesses, Native American-owned businesses and autistic-owned businesses.
Thank you. Time is up. Uh, the next person that we have is Donald Pro.
That was her. That was me.
That was you. You have two and a half minutes. If you, if you still have two and a half minutes. If you're done, that's fine.
But, uh, yeah, that was, and also you like the voting, um.
Just speak on the mic.
Like the voting, I have the same issue as Andrew.
Thank you. The next person that we have is Rosalie Gonzalez. Name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, Rosalie Gonzalez, sixteen Gration Terrace, Lawrence, Mass. So, uh, I would like to say that I am a hundred percent with the voting process to be completely in person with ID in hand. The ones that should be granted or able to vote by mail should be those that have a health condition that does not permit them to vote in person. My reasoning is because I was one of the many whose votes were stolen and fraud was committed. The people involved were not held accountable. Therefore, when I was allowed to vote on the day of election, my vote was not noticed and the fraud vote was noted, leaving me very disappointed and with no desire to vote. Therefore, votes should be completely and a hundred percent set to vote in person with consideration of those that cannot. This would definitely fix the voting problem. That's all I have to say.
All these names are gonna be submitted for the record. Thank you, everybody that participated. Uh, then, uh, we are going to, councillors, if you have no issues, any of you, we would like to entertain a, a, a communication from the mayor, city officials, city attorney. This is item ninety-three twenty-five, which is information regarding the Lawrence Energy Choice. We are the municipal aggregation program to be launched on May twenty twenty-five. The, everybody have received some type of mailing at their house. Everybody that have national grid have received some type of mailing at home and they have multiple questions and we have a presentation, uh, that might, that's gonna bring some clarity, uh, to the community. So with all due respect, I would like to entertain this item because there is a lot of people at home expecting this to be discussed at the city council.
Sir. Thank you, President.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Anil Navkal. I'm advisor to the mayor. I wouldn't be taking too much time knowing fearful agenda. I will let, let our energy broker do most of the talking. All I want to say is that this program was introduced as a result of Senator Piano taking the initiative and bringing this program to the city. And now we are at a point where the program is now effective. Mailers have gone to people on Friday and it's going to start saving people money right away. So I think with that introduction, I will have the, uh, our energy broker president and vice president speak to the program.
Do you guys have a present, a presentation or just, just general information?
We're just gonna give you the information.
Okay.
So Mark Capitona, Colonial Power, uh, we're the consultant for the city of, um, Lawrence for their municipal aggregation program. Tonight, I'm going to talk to you about mailing that everyone should have received that has an electricity meter in, uh, in Lawrence. So either you received this mailing because you're on basic service or you received a postcard because you're on a third-party supply. I'm going to start with this one because this is where the, the ponderance of, uh, people would have fallen. This program is an opt-out municipal aggregation. So what the, the, the city has done, they've gone out and procured energy on your behalf for the next thirty months and, uh, it's at thirteen point two cents compared to National Grid's basic service rate of, of fourteen point six. What I wanna say is what the city has actually done has brought you a choice that did not exist in the marketplace prior. No one is trying to hold you in these programs. This program...
Just go back to the rate so people can notice the difference between National Grid and the current aggregation program.
Sure. National Grid's basic service rate that everyone is paying right now, starting February first, was fourteen point six seven two. The city's rate that will be starting with the, uh, with the May meter reads is going to be thirteen point two cents a kilowatt hour. You'll automatically be enrolled unless you decide to opt out. Good news about this, you can opt out of the program, you can opt back into the program. There's no fee or penalty. No one's trying to hold you in this program. This program is about, uh, protection for you. Everyone's been through the, um, the, the wild spikes the last three winters, thirty-three cents. Nobody in Lawrence needs to pay more than the thirteen point two cents any longer because the, the city has gone out and protected you. They've set an electricity hedge. Whether you participate or not is completely up to you. Inside this mailing has all the information, but I just want you to know is inside there is a self-addressed stamped envelope with an opt-out card. If you don't wish to participate, simply sign the card, put it in here and you won't be in. But it's good news, meaning if you choose to get back in the program, there's no fear penalty to do so. There's no fear penalty to leave, um, National Grid. So it's a free choice that the city is bringing you that did not exist in the marketplace prior. What does it mean to the end user? All of the benefits you're currently getting from National Grid, you're going to continue to get. If you're on budget billing, uh, uh, an automatic withdrawal, low income discount, uh, you use MassSave, you have solar on your roof, all of those are utility programs that are going to stay in place. So from your perspective, if you wish to participate, you don't need to do anything. You'll automatically be enrolled if you received this mailing. Again, what the city has done is set a hedge or a ceiling on electricity prices. No one in the city of Lawrence needs to spend more than thirteen point two cents a kilowatt hour. That's, and you can move back and forth on your meter read as, as often as you like without fear penalty. That is if you received a, a letter mailing. Very different, very different if you received this postcard. This postcard is to notify you that you're on third-party supply. Many consumers may not realize they're on third-party supply. The rate is right on the back and this is important. So if you receive this postcard, you're not going to be switched. But what we're telling you is look at your National Grid bill, go to page two with the supplier services where it has what normally would be basic service. You have a third-party supplier. Look at that and by law, National Grid has to have the supplier's name and a one-eight-hundred number. You need to call that one-eight-hundred number and make sure there's no fear penalty to leave that program. But I want you to know, you have a new kind of hedge in the marketplace. When you call the supplier, see if they'll meet or beat the city's rate, thirteen point two. If they will, stay with the supplier. That's not a problem, not a problem. When that rate expires, feel free to join the program. But you need to make sure there's no fear penalty to loo, to leave that program. Many of those third-party suppliers have a hundred or a hundred and fifty dollar fee to leave. But you now have leverage in the marketplace. If they won't meet or beat your rate, you don't need to do anything and argue with them. You can always just go online, colonialpowergroup.com, the city of Lawrence, and opt into this program as long as you have your electricity bill. Go right on the website or give us a call, eight-six-six-four-eight-five, uh, uh, five-eight-five-eight, extension one. We'll, we'll get you right into the program. Again, no one is trying to hold anyone in the program by any means. This is about using the city's leverage in the electricity marketplace to your advantage. And again, what they've done is set an electricity hedge to protect all residents so that nobody has to pay more than thirteen-two. That's mu- municipal aggregation one-on-one in a nutshell. You had a question, sir? Yes.
And I'm gonna start with the councillor vice president Infante.
Before, uh, councillor, before question. I just want to thank two council members who were part of the committee who helped us get the proper bidding. Uh, Wendy Lezon, councillor Wendy Lezon, councillor Selena Reyes. They've spent some time to evaluate and nail who the supplier should be. So that's how it was selected. It was all done by the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, now councillor vice president Infante, you have the floor.
Thank you. I have a quick question. I know they called the, the answer that you guys provided last time pertaining to, to residence homes that have solar panels and how that's going to be affected. I know you have an answer, so if you can come to me and answer. If you could just remind me of...
Absolutely. Anyone that has solar panels, the, it is a seamless process if they receive the opt-out, um, card. Just, there's a slight variance. National Grid is always going to pay you when you're generating extra electricity, the basic service rate. So they would be crediting your bill fourteen-six-seven-two. When you're using the electricity, if you're in the program, you'd be paying thirteen-two. You'd get the delta like it's a, a win-win. If the program's rate is ever above, uh, basic service, just the opposite is happening though. Let's just say basic service went down to twelve cents, then they would credit your bill twelve. You'd still be paying the thirteen. Again, you can always opt out. Program will work seamlessly though. If you have a credit on your bill currently, um, that's gonna stay on the bill. All of those programs are utility programs. You're welcome.
Councillor Del Rosario.
Thank you, councillor president. And how long, I don't record how long do we vote it for? How long is the program running?
So this first contract, that's a great question, it's thirty months. Thirty months, uh, the thirteen-two. What I want you to know is at some point when, uh, rates are favorable, we'll be approaching the city again with a new contract, say, all, you weren't part of the, the, but there's a bunch of rates and a bunch of suppliers. We'll go through the process again, choose another supplier. Everyone will be automatic, that's in the program, will be automatically moved from this supplier to the next supplier. So it happens seamlessly. No one needs to do anything.
Any other councillors, councillor plan?
So one of my questions about solar was asked. I think I got the answer on my second question from my caller from District C and that is how long does the thirteen-six, thirteen, uh, two last, for the duration of the thirty-month contract? Is that the answer?
That, that is for the thirty months. And what I wanna state is we are the aggregator, we're Colonial Power Group. First Point Power out of Rhode Island is the supplier. National Grid is the distribution company. Those are all the players in, it couldn't be more, more confusing, but National Grid is still, all they are a poles and wires company. That's what they're gonna continue to do. The electron will be put on by First Point Power and will continue to administer the program for the city.
And National Grid will continue to return to outages?
Yes, just speak to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Hi Denise Salar. National Grid will con, continue to respond to any outages. If you have any billing problems or there's any outages, call National Grid. They're, they're still gonna come. They have no problem with this program. They're not going to not respond because the city has an aggregation and an alternate supplier. So you're still gonna do all the same things.
I would like to also jump in and just add one more thing about the solar. Those people who are on the R-two rate, the discount rate, they'll continue to get the discount just like the way they get it now. No change.
More questions?
Councillor Marmel?
What is the, what is the average per, during the year for National Grid?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear.
The average rate for National Grid during one typical year?
Uh, so that really depends on the electricity markets. Uh, we've seen it as high as thirty-three cents. We've seen it as low, uh, over the last twenty years, as low as seven cents. But there's no, there's no average. It's just wherever that, they buy. So, uh, right now I expect it to, to fluctuate over the next three years, somewhere between fourteen and maybe, uh, may, maybe sixteen cents a kilowatt hour. This rate that you're up against is their summer rate. The rate will change in August and I expect it to, to be elevated because there's two winter months in that rate in August. It goes August through February first. So I think the savings will, will escalate, um, starting in August.
Any other questions, councillor? Councillor Plan?
Sorry about that. One, one quick question. With the, what we're reading about nationally with the tariffs and with Canada, and I know that the Northeast gets a lot of its power through Hydro Quebec Power, and I don't know if that impacts us in Massachusetts. I know New York does, for example, but do you foresee any potential impacts here in Massachusetts, most specifically National Grid in our area?
It, so, um, in ISO New England, we get about nine percent of our power from, uh, Hydro Quebec. Um, it would really depend on how quickly this escalates. Uh, this contract is, is set in place, the he, the hedge has been, uh, purchased. So this contract won't be affected. Future contracts could be affected.
Can you provide us with the other mailing, uh, the postcard perhaps, uh, or a set of us for, for the councillors that they can have both? I have one at home, but not, not both.
Yes, I can.
Councillors, any other questions in regard to this program? We have received a lot of phone calls and a lot of, uh, a lot of, uh, text messaging and stuff like that. So I think that we're gonna be receiving more. Councillor vice president Infante?
Thank you. I have one for you, I'm sorry. For the, the copy of the mailers. Are you looking to have it, uh, honestly or looking to...
If they have it now, they can send it electronic as well?
Yes.
Yes, I, I can send it electronic.
Yes.
Yes.
Because what we wanna do, I'm, I mean, we need to, we try to kinda like, you know, explain, because a lot of people are scared, like, what is this?
Absolutely. And I, the one thing I would say is if people have questions, please have them call Colonial Power Group or go to colonialpowergroup.com. Lawrence, city of Lawrence, all of the information sits there. And, you know, we're happy to take the questions. That's what we do twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Uh, something that I'm gonna suggest is that we need to have a set of educational components for this program.
Yes.
Uh, that we don't have yet. I believe that before we send, uh, before you guys send out mailing, we should, we should be aware of that was gonna, what that was coming. Education component, please develop those and have that available, uh, for councillors, for their constituents. For their constituents, for all of us and for the community in general.
So, uh, we are planning on using the radio. We are planning on using the library. So we'll be having information sessions so that people can, also citizens center. So those are three places we will definitely invite people to come and ask questions and things like that.
Councillor, councillor vice president Infante?
Thank you. Thanks regarding, regarding the educational component. I thought we were, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought... I thought we were going to send an educational piece first before this official, this official mailing. Also, radio, library, all of those rates, but not everyone listens to the radio. Not everyone will go to the library. So for something as important as this, and I don't know how, you know, I'm sure you guys can figure it out, but direct mail is important for something like this. So I just wanted to put it out there.
So the program is about, is about to start on May twenty twenty five?
Your May meter read, your May meter read.
So May.
You'll see it on your bill in June. You use your electricity in May and you pay for it in June. So the only line item change would rather than it saying basic service, it's going to say First Point Lawrence Ag. That's how you'll know you're in the aggregation.
Anil, do we have, I believe we have some materials on this, I do believe we have some materials on the city's website, FAQs. And all the information is on the city's web in both English and Spanish.
It's going in the newspaper tomorrow. It's also going to be on the various Facebook and other places.
So another thing that I would like you to provide, we need a contact information, a direct contact to deal with the city officials and the community of Loisan. So if you have that, please provide it to us because it is extremely important for our constituents to have a direct contact when they contact us. So we're not just.
Yeah, so right in the, in the documentation that everyone receives, it has Colonial Power's number there. It's eight six six four eight five five eight five eight, extension one. It's in all the documentation, it's on the website.
No, 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 I'm talking about more like for the city officials, a direct contact for us in case that we have questions that we don't want. Sometimes it is, it is important to have those contacts.
I'll make sure you have my direct line.
At Loisan for the city officials.
I'll make sure you have my direct line.
All right. Counselors, any questions in regard to this program?
Counselor Vice President Infante?
Just one final thought. For a home member is, is the liaison between the company and the city of Lawrence. Whether for elected officials or for even the residents of the city, I just wanna make sure that we have someone by name. We just have someone on your staff, that's really important. And it's, I'm glad to know that it's already up on the website on both, for both, on both ends. But again, I have elderly constituents that don't know how to use a computer or, or may, or may know how to use certain programs, et cetera. So I just wanna re-exercise the importance of that direct mail, mailing for the educational.
And that should be coming, just so that you know, this mailing went out on Friday. People should have been getting it, you know, some people Saturday I saw, but Monday, Tuesday, it's USPS, so shortly.
All right. Counselor, Counselor Luzon?
Just to add, and thank you for the time that we spent together. But I just to add to this, Council President, that a letter went out. I received my letter at my house, we have the letter. And some of my constituents are asking because they received the letter. So and it's a self-explanatory letter, it's very simple. And it's telling them, it's giving them the details that they need. It's very simple and it's in Spanish. So just to add that what we agreed in the meeting, they're doing what we agreed in the meeting. Thank you.
No, and I agree with you. It is, I read the letter, it's self-explanatory. I agree one hundred percent with that. But in the city of Lawrence, we have an issue. And the issue is as follows. There is a lot of otherlies and back then, like eight years ago, there was a lot of people going around knocking on doors, asking for the receipt. So when we, when we see something on the mail that is, that says energy, everybody's skeptical, a lot of people are skeptical. So that's why we need to do a component, an educational component that is very strong. And, and it's gonna tell the city, it's gonna tell the residents, you're saving this amount of money and it's up to you, it's no penalty. That's very important.
Okay.
Any questions, counselors? So we can move on on the agenda. Thank you and we'll be, we'll be in contact. We expect that email tonight, if you can, please.
Yes, one hundred percent.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, counselors, we're going on top of the agenda. There is a public hearing, there is a few public hearings. But before we do that, we are going to go to. Yes. Counselors, we have one item in case that. Counselors, we have one item on the new business that I would like to bring it up before any then. This is item ninety four twenty-five, which is the extent of the ninety day temporary appointment for, of Melis Bonilla, the chief of police, the interim chief of police. These item, counselors, if we want to take it, we need to suspend the rule and take it as an emergency and be able to, be able to deal with it here before, before we go to committee. We have discussed this item multiple times at the committee level. And, and if there is no, no questions at the committee, different questions at the committee level, maybe if this council desire, we can, we can deal this at this level at this point. So. The expiration date, expiration date for the ninety days, for the ninety days was yesterday.
That's correct.
So this is, this is an emergency item, counselors. I will entertain a motion.
Motion to supplant rules?
Motion to suspend the rule to deal with this at this point and send it to committee properly second discussion. I hear none, all of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Now we are going to deal with item ninety four twenty-five, the extent of, the extent of the ninety days temporary appointment of Melis Bonilla as a chief of police. Counselors, any questions on this?
Motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve properly second, any discussion? Counselor Luzon?
So, and understanding that this is an emergency, but also we need to, we've been extending the ninety days for Mr. For Bonilla. How many times have we done this?
It's been a couple of times.
A couple of times and months?
Three to four.
Three to four times?
Yes.
And I know that we are in the process of waiting for the results, for the interviews, for the search of the chief of police. But I think we have to at least, I'm concerned, I'm concerned of this, I'm concerned about this process. About taking a vote every ninety days to extend something that, that should have stopped months ago. So I'm really concerned about that. I don't think we should be voting on extending ninety days because we are extending this process. I think we should have something from the mayor's office as soon as possible. And we have to send a message that the department needs an strong leadership. And I know Mr. Bonilla has been doing all that he can, but right now we have a sergeant doing the job of, that a captain should be doing. So don't forget that when you take this vote. Now Melis Bonilla is back to, to a sergeant. He's no longer a lieutenant. So take that into consideration before taking this vote. Because I've been getting a lot of calls in regards to this. So it's concerning that we keep playing this game of extending and extending and not paying attention to what is really happening. A sergeant is currently running our police department.
Thank you, Luzon. Any other questions? Counselor Rosario?
Thank you, three U. Besides all that, we can now leave the police department with our chief, regardless of the rank. So this is ninety days while the process is ongoing. And I know our colleague, the vice president, might have some, and some feedbacks from the committee that is actually working on it. And we know they're working and they're doing the due diligence to actually hire the correct chief of police. But in the meantime, we cannot leave that department with our leader. And that's the leader that we have been choosing for the past year and a half. And, and we need to finalize the process, which is ongoing. But at this point in time, taking this vote is to leave whoever is there at this point in time has been leading that police department. And I know he's not gonna be the chief, but at this point in time, we need him to stay there. Ninety days is ninety days. Hopefully the process is, we can finalize before ninety days, hopefully. But if it takes another ninety days, we're gonna take another vote on it.
All right. And it is important to recognize, counselors, that this is a due process. The due process is every ninety days, if we have a temporary employee, they need to come in front of the city council. Before we continue with the discussion, I'm gonna recognize Counselor Vice President Infante. But I would like to ask a little more into the process. What is the, the Counselor Vice President Infante was appointed by, by the council to be a representation on that committee? So I would like to get an update with things that can be shared in public. And please guide us through there.
No, 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 you. You're the representation of the council.
Thank you. I, okay, so before we get into the process, I do want to say, aside from the acting chief, we have, we also need to take into consideration that when the new chief, the permanent chief is selected, there is a transitional period that we do, we will need the acting chief to be part of. And I think, and before we.
Hi. And also, before we take, before we take the final vote, I ask my colleagues to consider perhaps a clause that states, you know, once we select, once the, the mayor selects and the city council confirmation vote is, is, takes place, that it is clear that, that we have a chief and that the acting chief is there for transitional purposes. And, you know, we'll resume back to, to his normal position. And that's something for later before we take this vote.
All right. Thank you.
Pertaining to, to the, to the search, what I can share publicly, and I'm gonna look at you to make sure, just give me a nod if I'm. We, we selected, we had originally fourteen candidates for, dropped out before the first meeting that the search committee met for. So we had twelve candidates to review. Prior to the, to the first meeting, we did receive the documents and a training document in preparation for the first meeting. We spent about two hours, the group, I thought it was great. I want to say the consultant's very knowledgeable, very patient and likes things to be, you know, direct and transparent. We had our second meeting last week that lasted about a little over three hours. This is where we, we went through all twelve candidates. And I have to say, although some members, you know, we, like, like, like anything, some members disagreed on certain things. However, overall, I believe the six that we chose to move forward, the members agreed with, with those. I have to say, and I'm proud to say actually, and I thank the HR department for their work with the consultants. The, the candidates that we have and had were amazing, very strong backgrounds. And whomever comes out from the six, I believe would be a strong chief for the, for the community. This week, we have, we have the interview scheduled. So from there, we will select, once all interviews are over, from there, we will select three to recommend to the mayor. The mayor will then choose from the three to send to the, the, the city council for a confirmation. And hopefully we will have a confirmed police chief soon. Other than that, I, I want to say the process has been great. The discussions have been great. I thank the consultant for providing a space that we can speak freely. He's very open with that and also emphasizes the need of privacy. So there's obviously things we cannot say, but overall, I'm very pleased with the process that we currently have. And I want to thank Attorney Garcia, who's, you know, this is a whole process that she was put into, attorney who in the mayor's office that ensured that this, this stays separate. So yeah, so far, so good, Council President.
Thank you. Any questions in regard to item ninety four twenty-five?
Counsel President.
Counselor Plan?
Just want to remind you and my colleagues that under our charter, under emergency, emergency measures, it, it states that emergency measures shall stand repealed on the sixty-first day following the date of the council approval unless an earlier date of expiration is otherwise provided or unless a second emergency measure adopted in conformity with this section is adopted extending it. Or unless a measure adopted in conformity with the procedures for measures generated is adopting extending it. So we have in our charter and our rules, but our charter, that this, any emergency lasts for sixty-one days unless we decide to take a vote, a second vote to extend it. And it sounds to me, Council President, as though if we're gonna go ninety days, we'd probably want to extend it an additional, whatever that is, twenty-nine days. Sixty, I say sixty-one days, sixty-first day, so twenty-nine days or thirty days, right? So that would be my recommendation if we're gonna push this thing through, Council President.
There's any, any, any opposition to the, to what Counselor Plan just said? I definitely will recommend that as well. Thank you, Counselor Plan. Any other questions? All right, at this point, I'll.
Council President. Council President.
We should, we should amend the motion.
I will take the amendment recommendation and I will amend the, the motion.
All right, it's been amended. It's been second, right? Who was the second one? Anna, Counsel Levy, you were the one, the second? Yep, you're second. Yes. Any questions in regard to this?
Counselor Plan? You have a question?
I would just, to clarify, and I know there's some questions regarding this. Our charter says that if we adopt something by, with an emergency clause, and by the way, we as a council have not been very good about following the charter when it comes to emergencies. If you read it, I'm not gonna go down that road tonight on that. But it does say that the emergency expires after day sixty-one. So, but it also offers us after we approve an emergency to allow us to either reduce or extend. Now this evening, I suspect that we're gonna want to extend it an additional twenty-nine or thirty days, depending on the math. So I believe the motion should be a motion to pass the, this as an emergency. That way we have sixty-one days and then we would have an amendment to that, or we would amend it to an additional thirty days. If you look under, clerk's looking, under three, three eight point subsection B.
Just to clarify, I don't think you're appointing the chief as an emergency. You're appointing him as a ninety day appointment. You're, you're taking a motion out of order and not sending it to committee as an emergency. So I think that's, emergency is with regard to the procedure. But the chief's appointment is a standard ninety day appointment for the ninety days. How do it just to be safe is fine, but I, the emergency was with regard to the motion as opposed, he's not an emergency chief. He's a regular chief with a ninety day extension. So I'm not technically the parliamentarian at the table, but I do think what we're talking about is a little bit apples and oranges. I think he's not an emergency chief. He's a ninety day standard appointment chief. You're taking the motion as an emergency.
I would agree, I would agree with that assessment. I think we already voted to not send this to committee. That was already passed, so that's off the table. We're not sending this to committee. What we're doing here is that we are, we are taking an action as an emergency. This is an emergency procedure this evening. We're taking it tonight as an emergency. We're not going through the normal channels. We're, we're gonna be adopting something beginning tonight on this issue. And, and the emergency is that we are going, any emergency, it gives the council by way of our charter, those sixty-one days. And then what we're going to do, I would recommend, is then we would extend that. We would amend that beyond as is directed in our charter that I just read under three point eight subsection B.
Yeah, and that's why the Counselor Rosario says that he was gonna amend it to the amount of days required to get to the ninety days. That's what, that's what he was saying.
I know, and it's a trivia, it's a, it's a small point. We have to pass the emergency measure first or make that motion first and then amend it. So I guess we can do it that way, that's fine. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much. So it's an ninety days appointment at the end of the day. Any questions in regard to the appointment item ninety four twenty-five? Any question to the HR director?
A little bit. Counsel President?
You guys have a question on this side? Clarification? What's, what's the question?
I'm so sorry.
Thank you, Council President. We, we heard a statement earlier pertaining to either a committee member resigning. I don't think, I just wanna say to the council, I don't think that's the case. We did get information that one other candidate did, like, withdrew his application. So I believe that's, that's what, that's what that comment was pertaining, but I don't, I haven't heard anything about any committee members resigning from the committee.
No, and if that's the case, we have a backup, actually. That is a backup. Any question to the HR director in regard to this appointment? At this time, I'll, Councilor Luzon, you have a question?
Yes, I have a question to the HR director, if I may, Council President.
Yeah, but you gotta say it.
May I finish?
Go ahead. Councilor Luzon, you have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Attorney, if, let's, I'm getting emails and texts in regards to this committee, this, the committee searching for the chief of police. So if we get another member that resigns, will that stop the process or the administration is, or the humans resource department, it's, will continue the process if we get another, if we get another member that wants to resign?
Absolutely. That's a great question. We're under the, it's our opinion that so long as you have quorum, it should continue. I think that that would be a detriment to the city to stop this process and to start it all over again, as you just previously stated. Chief Bonilla is a sergeant and he is in charge of the police department right now. He's been for it over a year and a half. So I think it's time for the city to move it forward, and so long as we have quorum, I think that we should be okay.
Any timeframe? Are we looking into two weeks, four weeks?
Also a great question, and I, I know that I've received this question a couple of times. So tentatively, according to the, the consultant's timeline that he provided to us, it should be by the end of April. So much sooner rather than later.
And if I may, Council President, can I make a comment?
Of course.
And, and, and out of respect for the police, for the police officers that have went through the process of becoming lieutenants, captains, and, and taking their exams, and some of them going and getting their degrees, out of respect for those officers that take their department very seriously, I'm gonna go vote no for the ninety days extension, 'cause I don't think having a sergeant leading a department is a good message. And I hope, a good, a good message is for, for the community. And I hope that the administration, along with HR and the committee, and I know they're doing the best that they can, I hope that soon, better than, soon, we have an answer of a permanent chief of police. I just wanted to make that comment, Council President.
Well taken. Any other questions? Two things that I would like to, for you to send us by email. What the quorum means when it comes to the committee, and also what is the tiebreaker procedures that you guys have in, in place?
Could you repeat that last one?
Tiebreakers, procedures. All right? Can you send us an email on that?
Absolutely.
All right, councilors, at this point, I go, I go, I call for the, for the question. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please.
Councilor Levy?
Yes.
Councilor LaPlante?
Yes.
Councilor Luzon?
No.
Councilor Del Rosario?
Yes.
Councilor Santiago?
Yes.
Councilor Marmo?
Yes.
Councilor Reyes?
Yes.
Council Vice President Infante?
Yes.
Council President Rodriguez?
About yes. Motion carries. So we, we, councilors, if you have no issues, I would like to go on top of that, I, I would like to go to the committee reports. We have a couple of peoples here, a couple of people here for different-
Thank you.
-items when it comes to the committee. Thank you so much, HR Director. So, so I would like to go right away on top of that Budget and Finance Committee, Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you, Council President. Budget and Finance Committee met last Wednesday. The first item we have is item forty-two dash twenty-five, authorization to expend in the amount of one hundred twenty-five thousand, two hundred fifteen dollars for, for the housing choice grant from E, E H, E O H L C Planning Grant for Reviviendo slash Gateway two-point, two-point oh. And it was brought up as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
Thank you.
There is a motion on the table, properly second, discussion on this item. Are you a known, Hola Sanfelo, please say aye? Aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Madam Vice President Infante, forty-three twenty-five.
Forty-three dash twenty-five, authorization to expand one hundred thirty-two thousand. There is an error on the agenda, councilors. It's not one hundred thirty, it's one hundred thirty-two thousand dollars towards the housing choice grants from E O H L C Planning Grants for the McGovern Transportation Center slash Merrimack Street corridor, corridor. And that was sent up as a committee report, and I make that as a formal motion.
Motion to accept the committee report, properly second, by Councilor Reyes. Discussions on the committee report?
Discussion.
On the committee report. Yes.
You asked, yeah.
I mean, who was the one that asked for the question?
Council President?
Council Luzon?
I think we asked for information on the date of the meeting. I personally asked for, I wanted to know who owns the land surrounded that project.
Let's vote first on that, on the committee report, and then we can make a determination whether or not we're gonna move this item forward or we're gonna keep it here. Well, the information is for the approval of the item, not for the committee report itself. So I'll call the question on the committee report first, authorization to expand one hundred thirty-two thousand. That's, that's been, that's a, a motion to accept that as a committee report. If it is no question on the committee report, Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Councilors, what's the, what's the motion on item forty-three twenty-five? So we can open the discussion if it's needed.
Motion to approve?
There is a motion to approve, properly second, discussion. At the committee level, we have many questions, including Councilor Luzon, that just, he has raised one question. Councilor Luzon, you have the floor.
Yeah, we, we asked in the meeting, in the committee meeting, who was the owner of the land surrounded the, the project? And if, if, I don't see-
Anybody from the, from, representing that item at this point?
I don't see McCarthy here.
Council President, through you.
Councilor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Ms., Director McCarthy is, was feeling ill tonight, and he did reach out to me and stated that Mr. Cirillo is here to answer questions on behalf of this, of, of this item.
They might, they might wanna table- I think that's news to Mr. Cirillo on time.
Okay.
So maybe, maybe we should table.
I was told Brad Bouchard from Brownwood Lawrence is here, and Mr. Cirillo is here to speak on, on the items.
If you guys are not ready, we definitely can move, move forward and then, and table the items until you guys are ready. Actually-
First, I'm, I'm here and I'm here to speak on, on that item.
As a matter of fact, there is a lot of questions on this item, so if you guys are not quite one-hundred percent ready, you can come over later on and we can discuss, because this is the true-
Motion to table, second.
There's a motion to table, properly second. No discussion on the table matters. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. This is the true MBTA community item.
Item eighty-four dash twenty-five, Council President, is a resolution in support of Lawrence Public Schools' submission of a statement of interest to the Massachusetts Building Authority, known as the MSBA Accelerated Repair Program, ARP, intended for roof and window repairs. This will be a two-year project, and the committee sent this up with, as a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, on the resolution that you guys, everybody received. Any questions in regard to this resolution?
Discussion.
Councilor LaPlante.
Yeah, so it's three hundred thou-, I'm reading it right now, three hundred thousand dollars of, for the two-year project.
Eight million dollars, actually.
Pardon me?
Eight million dollars total. Eight million. Yes.
I, I just, I, I know that we've gone to the trough, MSBA, several times, and they, we've been very successful. And I, I just don't know what appetite the MSBA is to providing more funding to Lawrence. I just wanna gauge expectations a little on this. So our, what is our feeling with this application? Do we think we're gonna be successful in getting, now, this amount, we're not gonna get the whole amount. We have to share this cost saving of it, of course, but what's our sense about expectations?
Sure. Good evening, councilors. Odani Hernandez, Chief of Operations for the Lawrence Public Schools. So you're correct, there's about three hundred million dollars that the MSBA has for the ARP projects across, right? So the projects that have been, that are authorized or that will be funded through this funding stream will be for roofs and or windows. In a recent meeting with the MSBA, they're actually in the city, doing an assessment on, on all of our school buildings currently. So in preparation for that meeting, we were made aware that there are funds available for their twenty-twenty-five core projects and accelerator repair projects, and that the deadline for submission is this Friday. And we were encouraged to, to look into the possibility of applying. So we took that as a positive invite to look, and, and, you know, internally, we have an internal document that has the life expectancy of all of, you know, roofs and windows for our buildings. So we saw this as an opportunity to put forward three schools. Two schools that are in dire need or that are in need of a roof replacement, which is just the South Lawrence East and the Frost School Complex. And then the windows project for the Arlington Complex, that is actually also in need of replacement. The Arlington has about eight hundred windows, and if you've been to the Arlington, you can see that you cannot open the windows, you cannot see outside, or you cannot see inside. So again, the total scope of the work will be about, between the windows and the roofs, are about eighteen million dollars, with the reimbursable, reimbursable rate from the MSBA to be anywhere between seventy to eighty percent. So we're looking at about a commitment from the city, if, if we are invited by the MSBA to, for any of these projects, about anywhere before, between four to five million dollars. That's not counting inflation. So again, there's a lot of work on our end to submit this application. Under the superintendent's leadership, we're willing to, to do that work and submit this application on behalf of the City of Lawrence. And we are hopeful that the MSBA considers, considers the, the City of Lawrence, maybe not for the three projects, but maybe for one.
Thank you. Any questions in regard to this resolution? This is just a resolution. We are just, we are about to apply for these eight million dollars.
Right, we're just, correct. Thank you for that. Again, it's something that is an opportunity, and we're just looking for your support to say, yes, Lawrence Public Schools, go ahead and submit the application on behalf of the City of Lawrence.
Any questions in regard to this? Counselor, Counselor, Counselor Diago?
Hi, Odani. I, I would like to know how do you choose this school? Because I found that those schooling, I don't see the school in my district.
Good question, Councilor Santiago. So the, these funds are very descriptive. So for roofs, for example, they have to be at their life expectancy. So life expectancy of our roofs are anywhere, anywhere between twenty to twenty-five years. So I'm looking at all of our schools and when they were built, and when there, whether there were any repairs or non-repairs to those roofs. That's why the Frost and the South Lawrence East were the qualifier. The Partham received a roof, a partial roof replacement not too long ago, so that's why the Partham, for example, the complex was not one of the qualifiers. So we look at the, the requirements of the MSBA in terms of the life expectancy, and then in terms of the windows, the Arlington is the one school that was built, who was the Arlington built? In nineteen eighty-seven, and those windows have never received an upgrade or a renovation. And again, looking at the windows that can open and cannot open, that's the building that the, the windows cannot open, where the Partham and other schools in other neighborhoods do, do have that.
All right, any other questions? Councilor Rosario? Counselor Santiago, any, any other questions?
Yes. Do you send some emails from, to the director for the Partham, anything they needed? Because they knew basically better than, than us, because they are in the school already every, every day. And do you send any particular email to, to require it, was really the school, they know the school needed, or they believe the school needs some repair?
Yeah, really good question, right? So in my role as Chief of Operations, I'm in charge of the Facilities Department. That's one of the departments that I directly oversee. I have my Director of Facilities here, Mr. Chris Merlino, and we work very close with our custodio and our principalship for the district. And as I highlighted earlier, one of the things that we do internally is we keep track of all of our buildings in an internal document where we have all of our school buildings, the years they were built, any repairs, including maybe, you know, like I provided in the, in the memo, some of the accelerator repair projects that has been done for our district in the past, and what has been some of the repairs and maintenance that we have internally done. To answer your question directly, I did not reach out to the principals, because I believe that was a decision that we were able to make on behalf of the district, to look at all, all of our schools under the qualifier of the MSBA, who are, which one are the buildings that one, have a roof that are over twenty-five years old, and two, their windows are over twenty, twenty-five years old. The three schools that we are recommending were the three schools that qualify. If, if we went beyond that, then we would not be putting any school forward, because all the other schools do not qualify, under those criteria by the MSBA.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any others, any other questions, councilors? All right, at this point, this is for resolution to allow them to apply. I'll, I'll call the questions. Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? The ayes have it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good night.
All right. Item eighty-five twenty-five, Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the Budget and Finance Committee.
Thank you. Item eighty-five dash twenty-five, authorization to expend in the amount of one million, two hundred ninety-eight thousand, seven hundred sixty dollars for the, towards the comprehensive opioid stimulant and substance use site-based program, was sent up as a community, as a committee report, and I make that as a formal motion.
There's a motion on the table to accept, to accept the committee report, properly second, discussion on the committee report. Are you a known? Hola Sanfelo, please say aye.
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 Any names? The ayes have it. Madam Vice President Infante?
At the committee level, we had additional questions. So I'm going to, I'm gonna, for the purpose of discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve for the discussion purpose, and it's been, it's been second. Councilor Reyes, discussion, Councilor Vice President Infante.
Discussion. I would like to bring up the, our manager, Sue Fink, that we gave her some quite of homework to do, to present back to us. I just wanna give her the opportunity for that, through you, Council President.
Do you remember some of those questions?
I was actually not present for that part of the meeting, so I don't know what the homework was.
Sorry, it was Kate.
Did you have Kate here? She have your back? Last Tuesday.
I believe you asked to see the application.
Uh, the, 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 the current, perhaps current projects that you might finance with this.
So I believe in the application, it listed some, oh, sorry. I believe in the application, it listed the partners. I wasn't sure. I didn't see the application. I know that Sue had forwarded the application, though.
Essentially, that is the one hundred percent of the money gonna be spent on those, on the those projects.
It is in, it is in the package.
I mean, but we don't know if that one hundred percent is going to be spent.
Correct. So our, our, our question is whether or not certain projects in question.
So essentially, it's, I believe, the hub partners. So that would be like Lawrence Smithwin Community Coalition. I believe the Psychological Center is getting some of the funding. This is what we proposed anyways, yeah. Lazarus House, Time for Change Ministry, Movement Family. So those are people who participate in what's called the hub. So this is an expansion of our existing opioid settlements program of what we're doing. But this is a Department of Justice grant. It is more geared towards diversion. So, you know, justice-involved individuals might be, you know, put into programs, say with like Lawrence Prospera. They were here that couple of weeks ago talking about their programs.
Madam Claire, please notice that Counselor De Rosario, she has a potential country of interest with this item. And this took, so another question that were raised at the committee level was in regard to whether or not you, all of those projects were going to be the finals and if the funds were going to be spent on one hundred percent around those projects. And you were mentioning something around the difference between the regular opioid settlement fund and the, and these ones.
So for this project, for this grant, though, we are going to take some money for admin funds. And there's going to be some money that's going to go to the police department because they have their hiring and outreach worker. And it's going to be part of their data support. So there's going to be funds for that also. So the entire one million is not going out to all our partners. Some of it's going to be kept for police department, our department to manage the grant. We need some admin funds. And other than that, I think it's all going to partners.
Any questions, councilors?
Council President.
Counselor Vice President Infante.
I don't find the list of partners that they submitted.
It's part of it.
It is part of.
We just questioned around whether or not it's going to be one hundred percent of the fund and if it is any other project, in particular questionable projects. Can you keep on explaining the difference between the, the settlement fund and this fund is more like related to?
So this is a grant, this is a grant that we actively applied for. And because we have the settlement funds, you are, you're sort of leveraged. More money is what we're doing because we have the settlement funds. As you said, this is a complement. When we applied for it, we did it that it was going to be a complement to the existing settlement funds, that plan that Awilder had put through to the state and was approved by the state. This is just to complement that. So it's to give, I mean, to help out the people that are on the hub mostly. The hub is what, it meets weekly, I believe. And it just gives real-time information to a lot of the people involved. Like you get to know if there's been an increase in overdoses, if there's a new drug out there, if new encampments, things like that.
Yeah, councilors, what, the reason that those questions were raised at the committee level, it was because there were some projects that were questionable, whether or not we should be spending money on the, on those projects. And the projects that are related to the hub are related, strictly related to opioid. Different than other projects that were funded through the settlement funds, the opioid settlement funds. What I will suggest is that we actually put these funds, or approve these funds, with the condition that it's being expended through the hub and the organization that made the deal with the opioid directly.
To the specific, through you, Council President.
Through you, Madam Vice President Infante.
To the specific organizations that are shown here in the, in the, in the application, which are just, just stating it for the record. We have the Psychological Center, Lawrence Prospera, the Movement Family, Time for Change Ministry, Lazarus House Ministries, Habit O, O Poco CTC, and Lawrence Smithwin Community Coalition.
And also, Madam Vice President Infante, it is important to recognize that the police department have a specific.
And the police department, yeah.
A specific duties that they do in combination with the, with the DPW when it comes to cleaning up and paying for all those stuff, which is going to be also hope, right?
Yes, because we have money for outreach workers and there's for the, the data person down at the police department. Not their entire salary, a piece of it, because we use that data to apply for more grants or to show that we're doing the work. The opioid settlement funds are going more towards the encampments for DPW. That's what we've been doing with that.
Right, no problem.
I don't know what the Department of Justice allows on their grant.
Any questions, councilors? Thank you so much. Thank you for the info. Counselor Plan?
Thank you. One of the things that I, I don't think that we do nearly enough in the city is to have a discussion regarding when we're looking for grant monies, what does that mean? I know what this means with respect to the nuts and bolts. We're going to give the hubs, hubs are going to distribute them. We're going to administrate, of course. I get the, I get that dynamic. But what I'm seeing and people that I've talked to are concerned is that part of the problem that we have, part of the problem we have, the homeless issue in our city, is because we have a whole menu of options to treat people, give them benefits, et cetera, to try to treat things. And, and other communities may not be doing what we're doing. And so we become more of a magnet for attracting individuals who may be needing it. And that puts more of a burden on a lot of things, whether it's businesses, we're trying to conduct their business, merchants, or whether it's, you know, we're just, or just having issues where there was a crime spike recently that apparently, I can't say this with absolute certainty, but according to people that I've talked to in the police department, was, started from the part of the homeless stuff. So the question I have here is, I don't know who is asking that we go ahead and make, and apply for this monies, but that's what I was already heard this evening. But has there been discussions about, are we perpetuating the problems that we're having in the city while trying to deal with the problems that we're having in the city? Chicken and egg, it's circular. And I don't know if we've had that kind of conversation. Do you have any insights as to when we're talking about going for grants like this, what it is to deal with the bigger picture of the various crises, the drug epidemics, the homelessness, et cetera, et cetera, in our city? Is that conversation taking place?
I personally have not been involved in any conversation of that nature. I don't know if there have been conversations among upper-level directors with the mayor. I don't know that.
And it's probably unfair because you're more the money person. You're not necessarily the policymaker. And it's more of a policy question than, I don't mean to, you happen to be at the microphone, so you're the one getting the question. But, you know, I think we as a city, as leaders in the city, should have that discussion at some point. And, and maybe the answer is we need more of this. Maybe we need to spend more money. More DOJ monies coming in. We need to bring more programs, more benefits, more whatever. We need to deal with it. Or maybe it's not. Maybe it's the complete opposite. I don't have that answer, but I would hope that at some level, that conversation is taking place because I do know what we're facing in the city. I do know there's a homeless problem. I do know there's drug problems. I do know there's a crime problems. I do know there's problems in our city. And I don't know if this helps or hurts. And that's the conversation I think we should be having. Thank you, Council President.
Any questions in regard to this item? Are here none? This time, I'll, Counselor Vice President Infante, do you have this, this motion for this motion purpose? Do you want to make it to prove?
Yes. So motion to approve.
There is a motion on the table to approve, properly second. Any questions on this? Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it.
Thank you, councilors.
Thank you.
I gotta stay.
Item eighty-six twenty-four, authorization to spend seven million three hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-five thousand point ninety-two. Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant Award by the Office of Lead and Hazard Control. Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the Boyanon Finance Committee.
Thank you. Item eighty-six dash twenty-five, authorization to.
Eighty-six, yes.
Eighty-six dash twenty-five, authorization to expend seven million three hundred sixty-five thousand, four hundred fifty-five dollars with ninety-two cents towards the Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Homes Grant, awarded by the Office of Lead and Hazard Control and Healthy Homes, was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second, there's a motion on the table, properly second. Any discussion on this matter? Let's allow some explanation so, to happen since years and so far so long.
Sure. So this is a four-year grant. It is for Lead Hazard Control and Healthy Home Interventions. The start date for this grant is April first. That could change. We have the option to push it back if we have more issues. The grant will allow us to maintain the two people we already have working on the lead grant that is currently ending and to hire two more full-time employees. The Lead Hazard Control is twenty-five thousand dollars per unit maximum, which is a, a big increase from the previous lead grant, which is good. As you know, the cost of building materials significantly went up after COVID. Healthy homes, we figure will average about four thousand. We can't go over that. An example of healthy homes would be mold remediation, radon remediation. We've done a couple of roof repairs because if there was heavy leaking. That's, any other similar health intervention, they can usually pass through. A hundred and eighty units will be made, healthy home intervention. Two hundred units will be made lead safe. That's our commitment.
Two different programs on that.
So, yeah, so it's, of the two hundred units we're doing, a hundred and eighty of them will probably receive the healthy homes intervention. I can't do a healthy homes without having some lead there. I can do just lead if they don't need anything, but. And we can't do healthy homes or we can't do lead without doing a radon inspection first. You do a radon test in the basement.
Are you splitting those into four years exactly? Or you, you use a, using the money for the next two years, three years, and then the four years?
We usually, we can usually parcel it out to four years. We're usually pretty good about it. It's been twenty years we've been doing, twenty-plus years we've been doing these grants, so we're, we're pretty good.
Councilors, any questions in regard to this matter? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item eighty-seven twenty-five, payment of prior year bill, ten thousand four hundred ninety-four, ninety-six dollars.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Madam Vice President Infante?
Can I ask you to waive the thirty days on that?
We need to go back and reconsider our vote. Councilors, any reconsideration on, on our vote?
I have a reconsider.
Motion to reconsider. Everybody's on the prevailing side. Can I have a second? Properly second, discussion. Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye on the reconsideration.
Aye.
Thank you. Sorry about that.
No, and now we're going to take a vote.
Motion to approve item eighty-six dash twenty-five, and waive the thirty days.
Second. This is motion on the table, properly second, discussion. Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Madam Vice President Infante and the Chair of the Boyanon Finance, please.
Thank you.
Go to item eighty-seven twenty-five.
Item eighty-seven dash twenty-five, payment of prior year bills in the amount of ten thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars with fifty-five cents towards Brody Hardoun was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There's a motion on the table, properly second. Any discussion? Just allow some explanation. All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. All right, let's go to the ordinance committee. Do you, Counselor Plan, do you mind going to a specific ones that are, people are here?
I, I think all of them, people here for almost all of them. I'm not sure about sixty-five twenty-five, the Easter egg hunts. Anybody here for that? Easter egg hunt, you're here for the Easter egg hunt? My colleague to the right, actually.
Yeah, just, just go.
Let's just do it. It'll be fast. Document sixty-five twenty-five is an Easter egg hunt at O'Neal Park from ten AM to two PM on April nineteenth. Let's send up to the full council with favorable recommendation. Make that in the form of a motion.
Second, there's a motion on the table, properly second, discussion. Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item sixty-seven twenty-five.
This is groundwork Lawrence Farmers Market. It can't be known common every Wednesday from nine to five AM to, from June eleventh to October twenty-second. And I think there's an understanding that the common will not be able to be used after, I think it's July the fifth.
But it's not the area.
Not the area that they mentioned. We should be all set. So I would send up to the full council, favorable recommendation, and make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, to approve that ground law, Lawrence Farmers, Farmers Market. Any questions? Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, sir. Item sixty-eight twenty-five.
Again, groundwork Lawrence. This is a farmers market at Old Connell Park. Every Saturday from nine AM to five PM from June fourteenth to October twenty-fifth. We'll send up to the full council with a favorable recommendation and make that as a, as a motion.
Second, there's a motion on the table, properly second, discussion. Are here none? All of us in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item sixty-nine twenty-five.
This, this is preaching activity in the park and can't be known common. I'm going to give the committee report, then I'm going to amend it from two PM to ten PM. It says June twenty-eighth from four to ten PM and August twenty-second and twenty-third. From two twenty, twenty-five, make that in the form of a motion, and I'll amend it in a second.
Second, there's a motion on the table, properly second. Any discussions?
That's a, that's a favorable recommendation. I want to amend it here in a second.
It's a committee report?
That's a committee report, but I want to amend it right now. So it's being second. I'd like to amend it now to add this. Because of the changes at Campagnon Common, the proponents, the applicants, as well as the Recreation Department have agreed to that all three events are going to be at Old Connell Park. And the June event would be moved from June twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, to June twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five. So that's the amendment.
All right, there is a motion on the table with amendments. Properly second, discussion, Counselor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Last summer, and I want to bring this up, I believe we have the, of our representatives here. And this is just for any, any event that happens in the common or any of our parks. Last year, we, I received, I'm only going to speak for myself, but I received a few complaints from residents that live on Common, on Common Street regarding the, the loudness of, of the preaching events that were occurring throughout the summer or throughout the spring last year. And I just want to make sure that we take that into account and that people are aware of that. And especially because these events are from two PM to ten PM. They're, they're fairly long. And I want to make sure that, that the organizations are aware that we did receive complaints about, about those, those events in our parks.
To enforce the rules, every, every time that you, that you receive a permit from the city council or an approval from the city council, just make sure that the, the speakers are turned to the, the people that are part of. Any questions in regard to this matters?
Council President? Thank you, Trujue. And also, all of us here at, at this city council, we need to be aware of also sharing the space. Last year in the summer, we actually provided two different events at the same time at the park. And there was nobody to blame for after those calls. Because when you call the institutions, it wasn't me, it was the other one. So we got to be careful on the conflicts of those days, so that way we don't have two activities going at the same way, at the same time. And that way we can hold people accountable if they don't agree with what the permit. It's, it's just, just an FYI for, for us to, to keep track of that.
Councilors, any questions in regard to this motion with amendments?
Just a quick question, Council President. Do they get, do they get like any type of document about the expectation from the city? Do they get something like that? Do you get?
Yeah, did you get anything? Can you explain your experience, please? Yes, go ahead. Name my address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Elena Tapia. I'm on behalf of one of the preaching activities, because I know that there are a lot of churches that do it in the park. So what I wanted to say is that the time is not really that it's going to be until ten. It's just that we want to have enough time so we can clean up and make sure, because it's usually over eight. But we just want to make sure that we have time to leave the park as we found. It's not that they're going to be people like preaching at all, at that time. You just want to be careful with the timing. And also, yes, because after we get approved from the city council, we have to go to each department and get all the permits from the fire department, the police and everything. So we do get like the rules and the expectations that we need to attend to when we do the activities. So we do get like the rules and the expectations that we need to attend to when we do the activities.
Yep, I mentioned that, and thank you for clarifying that. I mentioned that cause, and, and like my colleague mentioned, last year I received complaints. Sometimes, and I'm not saying it's your church, I'm not familiar with your church, and I know many churches, but I'm not familiar with yours. They go to the corner, they don't stay inside, inside the park. Some of them do it to announce that something is coming, but it's, it's not, you know, there's other people at the park, they're playing with their families, you know. But some of them, they, they use the corner as a venue to announce that, that someone is gonna be preaching in an hour, half an hour. So that's why I ask if the rules are clear, cause maybe it's in our park, but it looks like it's not in our end. So just keep that in mind. Getting a permit to use the park in the, the center of the park doesn't mean that you can go, it's not you specifically, that they can go to the sidewalk, to the corner and announce that this is coming or, you know.
And usually like even in the permit, it tell, it asks you like, how are you gonna publicize your activity? Like if you're gonna use the radio or flyers and this, like you're supposed to select what you're doing and just like do that, not to use any other part of the park. Cause even when you do the permit, you specify which area you're gonna use and you're supposed to stick to that area.
And I know it's not your church, but for the others that are listening, yeah, we're gonna use, use your event as an example, but I know it's not your church. And, and thank you for following all the rules. But for the others, make sure they, you guys read the rules and you stay, follow the rules. Cause getting a permit for use the park in, to be at the inside of the park, the center of the park, doesn't mean that you can be at the corner, using the sidewalk. And it's very distracting to the other people that are using the park. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, no problem. Any other questions in regard to this item with amendments? At this time, I will call the questions. All those in favor, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item seven.
Thank you.
Counselors, let's, let's keep it with the one that we have people here. Counselor Plan, I, I know that seventy-three twenty-five is, is not. Yeah, from personal.
Twenty. But who's counting? We send this up to the full council with favorable recommendation and make that in the form of a motion.
Second. There is a motion on the table to accept those twenty-four, twenty-four polling locations. Properly second, any discussion? Any discussion?
Discussion.
Councilor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. I just wanna double check.
We have comments.
Double check the location considering what we heard earlier today.
You're gonna say yes.
I know, but.
No, no, no.
But I just, you know, putting it out there. Yeah, so I'm gonna give it to the district council. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Council President. To follow the, the concern that was expressed at the beginning of the meeting and public participation, people from District B that had to vote, instead of voting at the old high school, they are sent to vote to, what was that location they mentioned?
Summer Street.
Summer Street. Any comments on that? Why? They, and they, they used to vote at Mary Macula.
Yes. Well, good evening, counselors. My name is Richard Reyes. I'm the Assistant City Clerk for the Election Division. Regarding your question, counselor, we do not designate the districts, it's the state. So when they divide the precincts up, we're not the ones who designate voters to go to those certain places. It's out of our hands. The state is the one that does all that work for us.
She's referring to the location of the polling place, not to the district.
Excuse me?
Hold on one second. She's referring to the location of the polling place, not necessarily the district division.
Well, the polling locations, we, I think over the years, they agreed at the school locations, we had them in different places, like private places such as like the multi-service back then. And they didn't work out schools are the best locations for us to work. They belong to the city. Custodians help us set up the equipment, so that's the reason why.
And just to FYI for everybody, this is the Elms location, which is located on Summer Street, right?
Yes.
The, the, the housing project.
Yes.
Elms. That's the, the one in question. Any questions in regard to the twenty-four polling locations? Any questions in regard to this? I hear none, so this time I'll.
I have a question. For the clerk.
Councilor Vice President Infante.
Thank you. This is a question for the, for the either main, our main clerk or assistant clerk. Majority of, of the polling locations for that district is, is in the North Common Educational Center. Why is that one precinct not included? Is it because of the space? Cause we have other, we haven't, for other districts like District E, District, I'm, I'm sorry, District F, that all, all of the four precincts are within the South Lawrence East. So is there, is there an issue with spacing? Can you explain that further for us?
Actually, the polling locations get approved by the city counselors. I had talks with the city clerk prior to moving Velbrook over to the Lawrence High. It's something to be considered about, but we also gotta keep in mind that we have a lot of elderly people that live in Summer Street and they're used to going to that polling location there. I mean, we did switch Mary Macula over to Lawrence High. I don't think it's an issue because we do have vote by mail or absentees. So I mean, I think we could take that into consideration of considering moving that polling location to the Lawrence High, having all District B just in one location like we did with the South Lawrence East. Yeah.
Those recommendations were discussed previously. The, the election division have decided to go with these twenty-four polling locations. If we need to change those twenty-four polling locations and recommend another one, I think that it's in order.
Yes.
Counselors, I'll entertain a motion discussion around this. Time wise, we cannot do it for this year, time wise, right? That's what you're saying?
With the timeframe being right now in March, we would have to send notices at least forty-five days before an election to all the voters in that district to inform them that their polling location has changed. So, I mean, we could kind of squeeze it in, but I think it's kind of like brushing it.
Yeah, let's take that into consideration, counselors. There is a lot of people that already know, especially on that location that is the Elms, there is a lot of elderly there that live there, that vote there and that, that is specific place. It is, it is, it is, it should be taken into consideration that, that factor as well. And the fact that we have less than twenty, forty-five days. All right, counselors, at this time, it's open for discussion. Huh? There's no questions? Okay. I'll call the questions. All those in favor to accept these twenty-four polling locations, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. We're moving on to the next item, which is item seventy-six twenty-five.
This is the approval of police details for the twenty-four polling locations. This was sent up to the full council with a favorable recommendation and that's the motion.
Motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-four polling location details for those. Any questions? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item seventy-seven twenty-five.
This is approved early voting, both in the September sixteenth and November fourth elections for one week prior to each of those elections. And so send up to the full council with favorable recommendation and that's the motion.
Motion to approve early voting, properly second discussion. There is a motion on the table, properly second discussion. Councilor Vice President Infante.
Thank you.
Pursuant to Councilor Large Anna Levy.
Thank you. I would like the, the council to consider, instead of having two weeks for early voting, consider.
It's one week.
It's one week? Oh, it's there?
Only one week.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Both of the, both elections, only one week.
All right, thank you.
Council Levy.
That was the same.
Okay. Councilor Rosario?
No.
I mean, no, that's, that was the same question.
No, one week.
Okay. All right. Any other questions in regard to the early voting? I hear none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item seventy-eight twenty-five, approval of the vote by mail. Councilor Plan?
This is sent up to the full council with favorable recommendation and make that in the form of a motion.
There's a motion on the table, properly second discussion.
Discussion.
Council Levy.
So this is for the vote by mail.
That is correct.
Right. So for the record.
For the record, for the clarity and for the transparency of the election, I do not agree on the vote by mail. So absentee ballot, okay, because this is something from the state, but no for the voting by mail. We have so many problems before and I think that the vote by mail was because of the COVID. It's not something mandatory. And just to make sure that none of those problems happening, again, I disagree with vote by mail. So again, for the record, for the transparency, for the coming city election, I hope that some of my colleagues join me in no vote on this item.
All right, counselors, any other questions? I hear none at this time.
Just make a quick comment. So I actually, I agree with my colleague, especially light of the most recent local election, not so much the presidential, not so much the state elections, but at the local election level for, for some reason. And it's not just the most recent election, we've got elections in, in the past as well where there have been complications, to be polite, that have really called to question the integrity of the system. And, and frankly, we have provided, I think, many ways for people to, to have a chance to vote. Early voting if they want. Preliminary elections, they can come to the council chambers and cast their vote. If they're not able to be here for whatever the reasons are that they can't be here on Election Day, they can vote, they can vote absentee. There are plenty of opportunities, Council President, for members to be able to vote. They will not be disenfranchised. They will, it actually, I think, will provide a service and more confidence in our election system that we take away the, I'm gonna be polite again, the complexities that we face every two years. And I, so I support my colleague's comments. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Council President.
Before we go to you, Council Levy, let's go around and then we take the second round. Council Vice President Infante.
Thank you. And I would like to add to the sentiments of my two colleagues, another issue that we've been having with mail, mail by, vote by mail, is we have elected officials' wives handling envelopes, which is not also protecting the integrity, is not okay. I've had issues in my district as well with vote by mail. So I, I agree with the sentiments of, of my, my other two colleagues.
All right, all right, any other questions? Council Levy.
How much of does it cost to send the vote by mail? How much we spend?
All right, for the last mayor race in twenty-twenty-one, in September, we had to have for, vote by mail? That's what, that's what you asked? For September of twenty-twenty-one, we had vote by mail, three thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four applications received and ballots returned was two thousand, five hundred and ninety-nine. It costs us, I mean, it's a postage of a dollar twenty-five, each ballot that we mail up. The voter does not have to pay for postage to return it.
So right now, that's the cost of the postal?
For the total cost, it's like four thousand, seven hundred and seventeen.
For the whole year?
No, that's just for one election.
You're only for one election?
Election, that is correct.
And now with the increase for the postage?
We still haven't got word yet from the post office to what's gonna be the increase per ballot. It depends on the weight of the ballot. We have our own postage machine downstairs. So until we hear any otherwise, then we still go by one twenty-five.
So how many people we have registered right now?
Right now, we have a total of forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-eight as of today.
And you have to send, when people is gonna vote by mail, you have to send the forty-three thousand?
No, we don't.
No.
On state allows cities and towns to opt out. Just to, just to make things clear, local elections are not mandatory to do vote by mail. That's why I'm here today. It's up to the city councils to vote. They could opt out or they could choose to have it. State and federal elections are required to have it. Local elections, it's up to the city councils if you guys wanna vote to have vote by mail. You guys could opt out or keep it.
Absentee ballot, yes.
Absentee ballot is always mandatory for all elections, yes.
And the work that has to be done, so you need to, right now, how many people do you have in the election department?
Four people.
We have four.
And that's including myself, four people.
Including yourself.
Yes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other questions, counselors? At this time, I'll call the questions. Counselor Reyes.
Just comment, I follow the question with my colleagues, but at the same time, I love to maintain different opportunity to our voting, how they change to vote. So I want to mention that.
All right, thank you, Counselor Reyes.
Council President.
Counselor Rosario.
Just to add a minute, we've been in this group in the newspapers and everywhere for all the scandal, being by voting by mail or regardless if it's absentee ballots. As much as you wanna extend the opportunity for people to vote, we should take Lawrence out of this black cloud and somehow not use the voting by mail. So that way, it's less opportunity for people to do what they did in the last election and there will be less talking about Lawrence, how bad we are when it comes to elections. So we need to realize that, that that costs us a lot of money and costs our people a lot of money. And at the end of the day, it costs Lawrence being on the newspaper as, as, as have we been for the past few elections. So somehow, even though we don't want it to stop people or, or restrict people how to vote, they also have a lot of options for how to vote. So it's time for us to think, how are we gonna limit these people that are doing the wrong thing, taking vote by mail out of mailboxes and not allowing people to vote? So somehow, we need to restrict that and that's how I think that we, we, we should go. We should think, how do we take Lawrence out of this dark cloud when it comes to elections?
All right, any other questions, counselors? I hear none at this time.
Council President.
Counselor Luzon.
I, I think it's, it's, and I'm gonna go back to a comment made by Councilor Levy when she proposed ID, voting with ID. So when I hear from different sizes, one is against, that the problem that we face in every election, let me be specific, what happened last year.
Let's skip it to the item.
Yeah, I'm gonna finish my point. It's not a general, it's a specific issue. We have had issues.
Keep it to the item.
Similar.
Keep it to the item.
We had issues similar.
Keep it to the item.
In the history of Lawrence, we have similar, similar situations.
Counselor Luzon.
And.
Excuse me?
Let me finish my point, Council President.
It's out of order.
Let me finish my point, Council President.
At this time, I'll call the questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
No.
Broco.
This is on a motion to approve vote by mail, if you do not want vote by mail, then you would be voting no. I'm going to start with you, Counsel Reyes.
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Amaro.
Yes.
Counsel Santiago.
Yes.
Counsel Del Rosario.
No.
Counsel Luzon.
What are we voting for?
You're voting for vote by mail, so if you want vote by mail, you would vote yes, if you do not want vote by mail, you would vote no.
Yes.
Counsel LaPlante.
No.
Counsel Levy?
No.
Counsel Vice President Infante. Counsel President Rodriguez.
Yes.
Yes, what's the count?
It's five-four, so it passes.
Five-four, it passed, motion carries. Item.
Berisha.
Excuse me, Counsel Levy, take to the point. Item 7925, Mr. Chair for the Ordinance Committee.
Item 7925, this is, ordinance committee met to bring this document, approve the election calendar for the local election on September 16th and November 4th, to the full council with favorable recommendation, and that's the motion.
Second. There's a motion to approve the calendar for the elections year, item 7925, properly second discussion. I hear none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item 9225, I believe this is a presentation. Yeah, this is a presentation, they're here. What, what, what item is that? What item is that? Counselors, if it is. Counselors, if it is no opposition, I would like to go to item 8225, which is the confirmation appointment of Victor Ortega Cruz as Director of Veterans Services.
Counsel, we do, we have one more, by the way, on, on ordinance committee.
This is a presentation.
Mr. Cirillo, okay.
It's a presentation, it's going to take a little bit. If it is no opposition, councilors, I would like to go to 8225, which is the confirmation appointment of Victor Ortega as Director of Veterans Services, Madam Vice President Infante, and the, and the Chair of the Personnel Committee.
Item, item 82. Item. Item 82-25, confirmation appointment of Victor Ortega Cruz as Director of Veterans Service, Services was sent up with a favorable recommend, recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
There is a motion on the table, properly second discussion.
That's something real quick to say.
Yeah, I mean, let's allow the candidate, and then you can ask questions.
Yeah, go right in.
Just introduce yourself, talk to, talk to us about you, and, and questions that were asked, and things that are important that you think that we should know.
Thank you, my name is Victor Ortega Cruz, 4 Union Street, served twelve years in the Marines, and when I got out in 2018, I faced a lot of troubles as a veteran, and one of my goals is to make sure that all veterans, when they come back home, they know where to go and who to talk to when it comes to benefits, federal and state, and other benefits and help that is available for veterans. One of the issues that I'm seeing right now is that a lot of veterans don't know about these benefits, and that's going to be one of my goals, is to make sure that they are well informed of all the benefits available for them.
I know Mr. Cruz for a little while now, I was first introduced to him back in the day when he was at Lawrence High School, at Lawrence, he was not at Lawrence High, but close by, at the recruiting center, and he was a recruiter here, as a matter of fact, I had a conversation with him earlier today, he is actually assisting people that he actually recruited, when he was as a recruiter, and providing them assistance now, who are, or making sure that the people who are veterans now are aware of the various benefits and things that they qualify for, because many, according to Mr. Cruz, aren't. And so I, I'm thrilled, frankly, that, that he's been selected, and he's before us for confirmation, and I'm going to wholeheartedly endorse and support his nomination.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Uzio. Thank you, Dr. Uzio, I, I didn't have the pleasure to know Mr. Cruz for so long, like Mark LaPlante is, but twenty years in the council, he probably knows everybody. I, I actually stepped into the office to get to know Mr. Cruz and his concern, and the type of line of work that he's thinking that he's going to bring to the city, it's refreshing, it's, it's, it brings hope to what we should be doing with the veterans, according to all his plans that he wants, and, and I told him that, you know what, don't give up, you might find people in the middle that doesn't want you, or will try to stop you getting what you need to, what you need to get, but it's refreshing, all your ideas are great, and I think on your leadership, we will do better for veterans, thank you for, for providing your service.
Thank you.
Counsel President.
Counsel Vice President Infante.
Thank you. Before I make my comment, I just wanted, I want to note that the Personnel Committee unanimously voted in favor of this item, however, I did give a suggestion to the HR Department and the administration that I want to reiterate at this level, when Mr. Cruz was selected by the mayor, there was a big media effort behind it, and I reiterated during the Personnel Committee that there was still one more step, there still needed to be the City Council confirmation vote, and there's times where you think something's going to pass, and it doesn't, and there are times where you think something won't pass, and it does, so I just want the city departments to be, to be considerate of that, to hold off on any press releases, any, any public announcements, official announcements, until the whole process is completed, thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Vice President Infante, any, any questions, councilors? I hear none, at this point, I'll call the questions, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? You pass unanimously, congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Madam Vice, Madam Vice Chair, Madam Vice President Infante, do you want to take any other items on the, from the personal matter?
Yes, one, one more item, because I have someone here waiting, item 83-25 is okay with the council.
All right, there is a motion, a motion to, you actually asked for a motion, you sent it to the full council with a favorable recommendation?
Yeah.
The item was sent to the full council with a favorable recommendation, yes.
Item 83-25, to confirm the reappointment of Francisco Abad to the Lawrence Planning Board, full voting member with the term expiring December 30th, 2028, was sent up with a favorable recommendation, and I make that as a formal motion.
Second.
There's a motion on the table, properly second, thank you, there is a discussion. I hear none, I'll, I'll ask a few questions. Mr. Abad, the Lawrence Planning Board is an extremely important board to the city of Lawrence, so it's hollows, why do you want to keep on serving on that committee?
Absolutely, Francisco Abad, 37 Hillside Avenue, it's just, as I mentioned in my previous meeting last week, it's just a great opportunity, I've been a resident of the city for, since 1996, when I came to the country, and it's been extremely a great experience, obviously, I'm going on three years now, obviously, and just want to continue to have the opportunity to serve and guide, obviously, our community in the right directions, and make sure that we're following the guidelines, and we're making the best decisions possible when it comes to allowing different projects and different things in the city, obviously following the rules and regulations we have in place, and I'm just excited to continue to do that.
Are you, are you serving on this, on the Lawrence Planning Board for a specific reason, or you just want to serve the community?
I just want to serve the community.
Particular interest?
Nah, nothing specifically, just want to serve the community, I always been involved with, since Lawrence High School, I was a four-year basketball player there, volunteer at the YMCA, I'm a boys' club kid coming up, so I've always been involved with the community, I always kind of looked for, for options and, and venues and things that I could do to help out while I can, I kind of been living here my whole life, I've worked here my whole life, I'm going on forty, I don't look, but it's been, it's been a while, and I just want to continue to do that, I've been involved and want to continue to have the opportunity to do so.
And when you have a project, that is a project that is important to, for some, but is not as important for others, or others have issues with it, and you start getting perhaps some type of pressure throughout the process that doesn't allow you to look at the project, deep into it, what is your thought about that, how you actually act about?
So I actually approach every project, or every, every, every case that come in front of us as individual, they're all different, obviously, I make my decision based on what's best for the community, what's best for that area, for the neighbors, so I don't really go into any projects or any cases with a, with a specific mindset, it's all different, depending on, on who was in front of us and what they're looking to do, so I don't know if that answers your question, but pretty much, just look at it individually and make the decision based on our guidelines and what's best for the community.
No, exactly, my, my, my question is, I mean, my question is to, to get to know
Absolutely, absolutely.
Also, what do you think about the traffic congestion around the city?
I mean, I've, like I mentioned, I've lived here my whole life, and traffic is obviously is, is worse, is definitely worse, is a lot of new residents in the community, it's, it's one of those things where we, we have to do what we can as a city as a whole, to kind of alleviate that through traffic studies and things like that, and it's, the city is definitely populated, overpopulated, and us, as, at the board, we kind of try to do what we can, following our rules and regulations, to kind of alleviate that, and continue to keep it a safe place to kind of travel and drive, while minimizing whatever risk obviously comes, you know, comes up.
All right, there is a, sometime, what I have feel that over the years that I've been in the council, it has been a disconnection between some boards and the city council, you have, you personally have four different city councilors that serve you, and you, as a, as a board member, you have nine councilors that you actually need to share some type of information sometime, because we represent some areas that those project might be impacted by, or those areas might be impacted by, or those constituents might be impacted by those projects. So I encourage you to look into who are the councilors, district councilors from those areas, and also contact the large councilors that might be interested to get to know specific on projects that might be controversial perhaps, or maybe beneficial.
Absolutely.
So we can input, we can perhaps provide input to the community, or if we have questions, we can have a direct connection to the board members.
Absolutely.
Sometime, I feel like, over the years, I feel like that's, that's missing.
There's definitely, there's definitely an opportunity there, that's definitely, I'll take that feedback, absolutely, thank you.
Thank you, and as a board member, I would like to share that sentiment with all the board members as well, because I think that working together, we, we go farther.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you so much, appreciate it.
Thank you, Counsel President, any other questions or comments from the council? Counsel Amaro.
Who do you refer to when you're making decisions as to what's best for the city? Is there, like, whenever something comes before you, is it just your own personal opinion as to what's best for the city, or is there anyone that you refer to to guide you as to what this city needs?
Not necessarily, I kind of make my own personal decision, I mean, all, all of us on the board, and my peers, we all have different thoughts and different opinions on different cases, so I make my decision, and my, and, and based on my personal opinion, what I think is best for the community, I don't really get guided by, by any of my peers or any of my leaders, I make the decision based on what I think is correct, whether it is or is not, it's my personal opinion, and it has to be respected, just like we respect everyone else's opinion in that case.
And I'll just refer to what our city council president just mentioned, is whenever you are making decisions, that it, it would be in your best interest to, every now and then, communicate with the city councils, and kind of gauge into, gauge into what their opinion is.
Absolutely.
Considering that we are like the boots on the ground, we have that personal connection with the, the members in our community, so we'll be able to give you guys some sort of retrospect as to what, what is being mentioned by, by the residents in our community, and what is actually needed. The second part of my question is, what are the challenges in your position, and how do you mitigate that?
Some of the challenges, obviously, is kind of not having everyone agree with your decision, and, and kind of, everyone has their own different opinions, people like Counselor mentioned earlier, some people go in there with the, with the mindset of something's going to get approved, and it doesn't, sometimes it's some, some, some individuals think it's not going to get approved, and it does, so that's kind of one of the challenges, kind of not having everyone agree with your decision, I guess, is, for lack of better words, but just not having everyone agree with your decision and stick into it based on what you think is the right thing for the city and the community. Just continue to make my decision based on, you know, what I think is right, I mean, I think that's kind of probably the, you know, the best response, is just continue to make that, and not kind of get intimidated by what everyone else thinks, or whatever their opinion is, just continue to make the decision on what I think is best.
Thank you, any other questions or comments, councilors? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, appreciate the feedback as well, have a good night.
Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Any, any other, any other one, 49? I don't know, I mean, let's, I mean, let's go to the presentation, first member, no, because I mean, let's do the presentation, they're not here.
Counsel President, we, we have folks here for document 92, we have like three or four people here.
By all means, let's go back to the ordinance committee, right, and 9225.
The ordinance committee met on 9225, which is the Home Equity Theft Act, was set up with full council with a, with a, as a committee report, and they make that in a form of a motion.
There is a motion on the table, properly second, to accept this as a committee report.
Discussion.
Any questions, discussion?
I'd like to invite the proponents just to briefly give an overview as to what this is about, and why it's important, why we should know about it.
Thank you, and, thank you, and good evening, councilors. So before you is, and with me is, first I'll ask it off is Charlotte Pasquale, our treasurer, Perlo Ortiz, and attorney Dave Kopola. Is with us, we're going to talk about the new law that has, the state has just passed, which is the Home Equity Theft Act, and with that, I'm going to turn it over to attorney Dave Kopola, if we could brief you in.
Good evening, city council, my name is David Kopola, and I'm an attorney that specifically, outside counsel, that specifically works for the Treasurer Collector's Office under Perlo Ortiz, and my office handles the collection of unpaid real estate taxes for the city. Our office has been employed by the city since about 2015, and we handle, assist the city in putting liens on property, real property for unpaid real estate taxes, and collecting on the lien, either through, mainly through foreclosure. And what I'm here to talk to you about today is the recent change in mass general laws that took place on November 1st, 2024, specifically involving what the city's responsibility is after the city becomes the owner of these properties through foreclosure. In the past, before the amendment to Chapter 60, when the city foreclosed on real property, they became the, the full 100% equity owner of the property, so they would own the property outright, and if they sold it, they would take 100% of the profits, and nothing would go back to the former owner. Well, Chapter 60 was amended now to have excess equity or surplus after a foreclosure, go back to the former owner after the city took what is owed to them, and the result of this took place, was a result of a US Supreme Court case that said it was unconstitutional taking more, more than what was owed after you foreclosed on the property. So the reason I'm talking is to you about it is because after foreclosure, the, the mass general laws has changed, where the city must make a decision within 14 days after they become the owner of the property, whether they plan on retaining the property for municipal purposes, or selling the property. And in both avenues, excess equity would be generated, but this is a timeframe where the city needs to act fairly quickly, because notices need to go out to the former owners of the city's decision whether to retain the property or foreclose, or, or sell the property. Now, this is not a very common occurrence, just to give you some general statistics, the city has foreclosed on probably about 15 properties since 2021, so there will be about, on average, three or four foreclosures that you will need to make a decision on, but it's not something that happens on a, a very frequent basis, based on the high rate of collection of real estate taxes, and people being able to come forward and pay these taxes before it gets to foreclosure.
Counselors, I think that there is a lot of questions to be answered eventually, and I think that the city need to be, when it comes to the city council procedures, there is other set of conversations that need to happen, because some of those properties come in front of us, and decision need to be made within 14 days, obviously, those decisions can be made, whether or not we're going to retain this property before those 14, 14 days arrive. those fourteen, fourteen days arrive, but, uh, but I think that as a council, we need to, uh, well define our process and procedures when it comes to real estate sta- task, uh, uh, real estate properties, especially on those that we have foreclosed, uh, foreclosures since two thousand twenty-one to now because, I mean, that is something that it is important to, to kind of talk about.
Correct, and we don't want to wait fourteen days, um, after judgment, so once the property hits land court, we're going to proceed like if the city already owns a property. That way, we have the judgment from the city, the, the, the decision from the city council when, um, we get the judgment. So, avoid any penalties from the state.
Right. Any questions, councillors, when it comes to this? This is as a result of a, uh, of the, uh, of a court order that the, uh, the state have act upon, uh, adopting this law. Change just to side, to chapter sixty.
Yes, uh, so, um, with the, the governor signing the budget over the summer, um, the, uh, chapter, chapter one hundred and forty of the Acts of two thousand twenty-four amended chapter sixty. So, this is effective as of November first, two thousand twenty-four. And the city has not obtained a foreclosure judgment since the law went into effect.
All right, I think, as I said, we need to, uh, be aware of these changes because it will, it will change drastically when it comes to, uh, those foreclosures and potentially people not paying their taxes, I mean, perhaps. Any questions, councillors? Thank you for the update, we highly appreciate the, all that information, we're going to keep on having, uh, these discussions, uh, either at the city council level when we have to, or, uh, with the city attorney, uh, and, uh, and the, and the treasurer, uh, department. So, thank you, thank you so much for
Thank you.
coming in front of us and inform us.
Thank you, councillors, have a good night.
All right, thank you so much. Councillor Santiago?
Yes, when the, when the item was in the ordinance committee, I made the question and I didn't receive any email about it.
Your question was about surplus property, the asset officer is going to be reaching out to make sure that you you mother?
And attached a list of the surplus properties that you know.
Can you send it to every councillor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good night.
All right, uh, any other questions, councillors? Uh, guys, we haven't finished yet.
I'd like to apologize for that alarm earlier, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine, thank you so much. Uh, councillors, we have a committee report vote to take, we haven't taken the, uh, the vote on that item yet. Uh, councillors on the committee report. Any questions? I hear none, uh, all of us, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Now, we need to, this is just an information, no matter, let's stay on that. Can we draw a table, let's stay on?
Motion, we draw this item.
Motion, we draw, properly second. Discussion, I hear none, all of us, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any names? The ayes have it. All right, let's go back to personnel item forty-nine twenty-five.
Thank you. Item forty-nine dash twenty-five, authorization to fill enforcement prosecutor position, ordinance number zero-two-point-seven-two-point-zero-five-zero, and inspectional services vacant for more than six months was sent up as a committee report, and I make that as a form of a motion.
Second.
There is a motion on the table to send, uh, to receive, this is a committee report, properly second, discussion. I hear none, let's take a vote on the committee report, all of us, please say aye.
Aye.
Any names? Uh, the ayes have it. Madam, madam vice president and founder, what is the motion? You don't have to take a motion, I mean, if you don't want.
Motion to approve for the purpose of discussion.
There's a motion to approve with the, for the purpose of discussion, properly second.
Discussion.
Let's, let's have a discussion, councillor, vice president and founder.
Thank you, council president and members of the council. During the, the personnel committee, we did, we did ask some questions regarding the position itself, it was presented to us that this position was going to be reposted. Um, was, they were going to look at new ca- candidates, relook at candidates and, and just do this whole process again, and I just want to make sure that that's the, still the intent, and I want to just get an update on, on, on this position.
That is the intent, yes. So, the intent is to, uh, repost the position. Uh, ISD is to, uh, director Pat Ruiz is to do all of the, the interviews, receive the applications and so on and so forth. So, it should be done as, um, as all positions should be done.
Uh, we have, um, madam vice president and founder, we also have the city attorney that it was, uh, given a song update when it comes to the procure, uh, that when it comes to the, uh, enforcement procedures that we have, uh, based on chapter, uh, forty B, I think?
Forty U.
Forty U. Uh, do you mind going over to see how the cor- the correlation ship between this position and potentially the, the conflict with the, uh, with the process that we have to have in progress?
Sure. Uh, Tim Hooton, city attorney. Uh, basically, just to give you how this works is that the, uh, the inspectors would go about, if they found a violation, they would write up a ticket. Um, the person that receives the ticket would have a right to appeal that. Um, the appeal is to what's called a forty U, and forty U is just the mass general law section. And forty U person would hear that ticket, it's an independent person, it's not a member of inspectional services, in many cases, it's usually an, an independent lawyer. Uh, for the longest time while I was here, we had a grant and were able to use, uh, through the fire chiefs association, we're able to use someone from there. About a year and a half ago, uh, that grant, uh, ran out and I was instructed to locate, uh, forty U potential people for appointment. I came up with two attorneys, uh, I don't know why, but at that point, it died. Um, we never appointed a forty U officer, so, um, the reason that you need a forty U officer is there has to be a right of appeal. Uh, what the investigator to many other, the prosecutor and many other things that, that, that position would do is then, if the person then went to the forty U officer and lost again, and it said, no, we, we believe that the inspector was right, you, you left garbage outside, there's mold inside, you have lead paint or something like that. Um, they could then appeal a second time to the, uh, district court. Uh, what the, uh, one of the purposes of the prosecutor position would be to present that before the housing court, or it could be the district court, uh, depending on that, and that would be the purpose of this, this position, but as of the moment, we don't have a forty U officer, so, uh, that's just explaining that part. That wouldn't be the only thing that this position would do, but it, I, I just want to explain it. When they say like that, we have so much on tickets and arrears, well, those aren't going to go anywhere until we get the forty U officer in place.
I think that, that, we established that back in two thousand seventeen or eighteen, uh,
We've had it for some time, like I said, we, we had a grant and then when that grant ran out, the, the person didn't do that anymore and, um, they had asked me to get a couple of names, I had presented a couple of names, but that was, that was the end of it.
Is chapter thirty U, uh, forty U only related to, to, uh, health, health condition, uh, perhaps in the houses and stuff like that?
It's any of the tickets that are issued by inspectional services, it could be for trash, it could be for, um, you know, whatever, it's bad piping, uh, whatever, whatever they find.
Just from the inspection or services?
Just from inspection services.
Or, or, or any, anything else?
Not parking tickets, not anything like that, no. We have, we do have a, um, Richard Rodriguez on parking tickets, he is the review on that, so.
No, I understand. Councillors, any questions? Uh, we have the, the director of the inspection services here. If you can still have any questions for the inspection services.
Good evening, councillors, uh, I'd like to read a, read a statement. So, um, tonight, I want to discuss the crucial role of the enforcement prosecutor position in our city. This position is critical for upholding housing standards and ensuring the safety and well-being of our community. I am seeking authorization to fill the enforcement prosecutor position. The enforcement prosecutor will oversee enforcement of local ticketing procedures related to illegal dumping, housing and building regulations, city ordinances and zoning regulations. This role involves prosecuting cases for all violations in the inspectional services department. The enforcement prosecutor represents the city and housing court for cases involving housing code violations, building code violations, city ordinance and zoning ordinance, again. This in, this includes preparing legal documents, presenting evidence and arguing cases to ensure compliance with local laws and regulations. The enforcement prosecutor collaborates with various city departments such as the board of health, health department, building department, water, water and sewer department, tax department and department of public works and the police department and fire department to identify problem properties, coordinate enforcement efforts like vacant properties, graffiti and illegal dumping. The enforcement prosecutor interacts with community members to inform them about their housing rights and responsibilities, enabling residents to understand how to report violations, uh, and obtain assistance. Um, by, uh, by prosecuting, by prosecuting offenders, the enforcement prosecutor ensures that all residents can be, can access safe and inhabitable housing, enhancing, enhancing Lawrence's overall quality of life. Uh, in, in summary, the enforcement prosecutor plays a crucial role in upholding the housing standards within our community. The effort of enforcement prosecutor not only enforce the law, but also protects the rights and safety of the city, the, uh, the city of Lawrence and its residents and businesses.
Good evening, madam vice president and founder.
Thank you, thank you, director. Council, uh, council president.
Well, thank you, I have a
Going to council, council Santiago.
I have a few questions for, uh, the director of the inspection services. Since we don't have thirty U, a forty U in place, how are you actually going to proceed with the tickets? If we have so many tickets, how, how that's going to take place?
So, we, we, you know, we issue tickets daily, maybe twelve, fifteen tickets, whatever. Hopefully, um, hopefully they will comply and pay the tickets. If they don't, within twenty-one days, then unfortunately, uh, we can't pursue it because there's no, um, no, um, enforcement prosecutor, not enforcement prosecutor, the, we call it the hearings officer, there's no hearings officer.
So, I think that before we actually cross the bridge, we need to know how to walk.
Well, yeah, we, we need to get a person in place to, to, to actually learn how, you know, learn how to do this. Um, it's not, it's not, you know, come in and just do the job, you have to actually train. There's a lot of training for this, uh, person has to come in, um, learn citizen, citizen serve, that's the, that's the platform they're going to use. They have to learn about housing code issues, they have to learn about illegal dumping. We have the illegal, illegal dumping law that, um, that we testified back in, I think it was, right, uh, what was it? Yeah, and that's a ten thousand dollar, um, um, uh, violations for construction equipment, you know, major companies that we use that. So, we have a couple of people that are working right now, um, just specializing in illegal dumping and, 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 uh, in housing, um, the building also, so, you know, someone needs to be there to, to learn this, to learn this job, we, we have to train them. And in the meantime, working in conjunction with the city attorney's office to find, um, someone to, um, to be the, um, what do you call it?
Forty U officer.
Uh, the, the forty U officer.
You're, no, no, I mean, I was not going to go that way, but I mean, I, I allow to, I allow you to explain a little more, but I mean, what I was going to go to is that before we even actually think about this position, to reauthorize the position, that by the way, I have, I have a lot of calls from people that already have, uh, a mindset that this position is being acted for in a specific person, not necessarily to go through a due process of, uh, of, uh, posting the position. Or perhaps it's going to be posed, but we already know like who's going to be doing the position.
Um, that's, that's your opinion, councillor? I can't, I can't speak to that?
Hold on, hold on, because I allow you to
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
to elaborate before, you have to cut a little bit of, uh,
Yeah.
a little bit of time.
Mm-hmm.
So, but I mean, uh, this is not my opinion, this is people that have called me and have told me, so it's not my opinion, uh, even though I might tend to believe that, but I mean, that's not the point, this is not the discussion. Uh, the discussion around this actually that is more important than this, which is basically, why don't we, instead of focusing on acting this position, uh, to be able to uh, get somebody there that we're going to have to train, that we're going to actually explain, that we're going to have to do many things, why don't we put in place chapter forty B first? Uh, forty U first, which is basically what is going to allow the department to actually get out of all those tickets that you give out. Imagine just within ten days, you have a hundred fifty tickets.
We have thousands, we have thousands of tickets.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, so, essentially what need to be done and the focus need to be is like acting on chapter forty U, which is going to allow you not to have all those tickets. Because that's why we have thousands of tickets, it's, it's not because we don't have this position, because this position haven't been filled for quite some time, the problem before was that when we are, when we had this, this, uh, this chapter forty U in place, something happened at that department. And that was not during your time, by the way, I don't want you to take fault of that. Uh, and then all that process that we have worked so hard in terms of policies and procedures, went all down. And now we don't have chapter forty U in place. Uh, and essentially, we looking to get an enforcement prosecutor, prosecutor, prosecutor position when we truly need is chapter forty U to be in place. Uh, and stop, I mean, we're going to have to train this person as you explained, like, it looked like this person doesn't know nothing about, uh, that stuff yet, it look, it does what it sounds like. But I mean, I, I think that, I don't think this is, this is the right step at this point, once we have chap- chapter forty U in place, and then we can go ahead and, and have the prosecutor to actually work on, over there.
So, actually, chapter forty U is an ordinance. It is an ordinance right now.
It is, it is an act of a law.
We just don't, no, we, it's just an order, city ordinance, we don't have a, um, a, uh, I always forget. Hearings officer, we don't have a hearings officer, but we, the ci- the, the, the city ordinance is forty U.
Yeah, no, it's, it's an act of a law.
No, it's a, it's an ordinance.
It's, it's an act of a state law.
Okay.
So, we, uh, we adopt it.
Yeah, you adopted it, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but it is, it is a city ordinance.
Yes, and then, and then, but for, uh, for that to be in place, we need to do many different steps so we can have the hearing officer, uh, including money. I think that, uh, the right step to be able to get money to the city is to actually get the hearing officer in place as we have it before and not try to intervene uh, as of what that hearing officer should be doing. And perhaps political pressure on that, on that specific position. Which, that's one of the reasons why we ended up having, not ha- not having anybody now. One of those.
So, the hearings officer is just in case they appeal. If they don't appeal, we don't need a hearings officer.
No, that is absolutely wrong, director.
No.
By law, no, 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 give me one second.
Okay.
If, if you go to the court, the court will tell the city, you have to have it.
Forty U, you don't have to go to court.
It's not like it's an option to us.
Forty U, you don't go to court, you, you settle that in-house.
Wait, when we actually have a ticket that people have the right to appeal, what they ended up going is to court. If we don't have a, a, a hearing. If we don't have a hearing officer, the court will tell the city, you have to have it.
It's not what this law.
It is the law.
I beg to differ, it's not what this law.
It is the law.
Let's, let's wrap this up.
And that's why we are wrong on this type of thing, because we don't, we're not putting in place what we need.
I, I know the law on this, I read it, I know the law.
Why don't we have a hearing officer?
Second?
Why don't we have a hearing officer?
We don't have a hearing officer because the director was here before, got rid of him, that's, that's why.
Exactly, you got it.
But I'm here now, I'm here now.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, council president, thank you, director.
I think that we should have a hearing officer.
Councillor Santiago, you have the floor.
The answer to my question is about collect ticket.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Councillor De Rosario.
Sure, to you, uh, vice chair. Sometimes I'm sitting here and I, and I feel ashamed that we prevent EU or some departments to act on this, to hire whoever it is going to hire, but somehow, somebody tells us who might be going to this position, and that's why sometimes we take the position that we take, and that is a shame.
So, I want to, sorry, councillor De Rosario.
Do I have, do I have the floor?
One thing I just want to reiterate that we did start the position stating that this is going to be reposted.
And that's great, and that is, and that is great, and I agree, it should be reposted. But if we don't approve him to hire this, that for six months, if we, if he doesn't get the approval, what a good what it does to repost the position, he doesn't have the authorization to hire anybody. So, this position have been opened down for him, for the director to ask for the authorize, to, for us to authorize him to fill this position, they've been, they've been open for six months according to this, but we know it's been open for the longest. Just to authorize him to get this position out, repost it, whatever we want them to repost, repost it, and, but we focusing on a statement that somebody made to some of us or anybody of us, and from there on, we prolong this process. It's just an authorization for him to fill the position, and then we can ask questions, we can tell them what we need. I mean, it, when the position get posted, also we have a job description, who we hire. I mean, when the position get posted, also we have a job description, who we hiring. I mean, it's just an authorization of six months. I seen that authorize me to fill this position. I seen it for the years that I've been here. It doesn't take that long. I never seen it taking that this long for anybody else or any other department.
It's been approved once already.
Okay, so, I mean, once again, I never seen it take this long. And again, we use the word, oh, because somebody told me, oh, because I had this phone call, because we know who you're going to hire. It's just an authorization for him to authorize, to start the hiring process, then they can post it. The City Attorney is there, the Acting Director of the Personal Department is there, also asking for this to be reauthorized. And we mumbling around on this because somebody else called us, and then somebody else is going to go into that position. But we forgetting the actual procedures. It's just authorize me to fill this position, it's been open for six months. But we focusing on who's going to be in that position. Not the procedure, the actual procedure. And that's what make me, I mean, again, make me feel sometimes ashamed of what we actually doing here. Are we chasing people? Are we doing things because who is going to hire? Who's going to be hired? Are we, it's because the person that is going to be in that position, that we're not authorizing the Director to fill this position for six months? Hopefully, we don't get somebody there in that podium that said, you know what, you guys are discriminating because you think it's me, and it's not going to be me, and now you're not authorizing the Director to fill this position. So, we need to look more into that and not who's going to be in that position. Is the Director asking you guys or asking us to, I mean, let me fill this position if it's open for longer than six months? That's my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Del Rosario. Any other, one more? Council Marmo.
I believe many of the discussions, and specifically this position I'm learning about, is the reason why I set up at the Economic Development Subcommittee meeting. It's to address the challenges regarding how the negative impact as a result of, I'm not sure if it's as a result of this specific position being vacant for so long. So, I'll make sure to take a mental note of this and make sure that we're having that discussion at the Subcommittee meeting level. Who, based on the fact that this position has been vacant for quite some time, the duties and responsibility that falls under this position, has it remained kind of just lingering, or is that a responsibility and duty that you have had to maintain yourself?
So, as most of you know, I started in April of last year. This position was vacant. I came in front of the Council, they okayed it to fill the position. People applied for the position. I chose someone, but then what happened was during that time, things happened, and the six months went over. So, all I'm doing right now is seeking to fill that position. That's it.
Is this position, is what, like the vital role in terms of violations not properly?
It's part of the whole picture with the Housing Court. It's part of the picture with the housing, when they issue housing tickets, when they issue illegal dumping. You know, this just last three days, we have six people, we have 23 cameras all over the city that we put them in specific areas, and we caught these people. Most of them complied, and because we had them on video, they paid the tickets. One of them had a DPW gave them, it cost them like $900. We gave them $300 ticket, they paid it, and they also paid the $900 because right on in her district, right on Andover Street, right McDonald's, they opened up a U-Haul in the middle of the night, and they started dumping furniture on the road. Because there was video cameras there, I have someone assigned to do that, and at, you know, temporary, they went ahead, checked all the cameras, they did everything, they worked with the Police Department, and we caught them. And, you know, we, you know, the DPW got the money back, and we gave them an issue. I mean, we issued them a ticket, and they paid it. So, it's not just one thing, it's not just one, you know, 40U. It's, you know, we work in conjunction with the Fire Department, all the city ordinances, the Fire Department and ISD, a lot of those ordinances, they, you know, we work together as a team to try to clean up the city. You know, I want to apologize for not coming, I was sick last week. Also, I was supposed to come here, and I apologize because I wasn't here, but I was sick last week. So, but, you know, I'll, you know, I'll be, when you call me again, I'll be prepared, and I'll give you your report. I send and handle a report to everybody on this City Council, you know, indicating everything I did in ISD. And I only did that in, you know, since April. So, I think a lot of people are happy with ISD, we're doing our job, and we're trying to do the right thing. People out there are going to talk, and it is what it is. That's the way it is. So, I mean, I can't go on assumptions.
Thank you, Director. Council Levy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we keep going like around and around in the same, in the same way. So, we also, we are the Personal Department, sorry, are the Personal Committee. We review everything. We review the position. We review the posting. We review the ordinance. We review the qualification, and we are different things also to be added on the qualification. So, now, I think so that we should give it, you know, that to the department, the authorization just to do the posting.
Thank you, Council Levy. At this time, there is a motion, is a motion to approve. At this time, I will call the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And roll call. Roll call, Clerk.
Councila Levy?
Yes.
Councila LaPlante?
No.
Councila Luzon?
No.
Councila Del Rosario?
Yes.
Councila Santiago?
No.
Councila Marmo?
Yes.
Councila Reyes?
Yes.
Council President?
No.
Council Vice President?
Yes.
Passes five, four.
Thank you, Counselors.
Hi, we're going back to Ordinance Committee.
Yeah, so we have one last. Document 7325, enacted to deter illegal parking during snow emergencies. This is set up to the full Council with a favorable recommendation to order a public hearing, make that in the form of a motion.
There is a motion on the table to order a public hearing on this item, properly second, Councila LaPlante. Discussion on that, Councila LaPlante, do you mind, do you mind reading a little bit of the end when they said this fee should be reviewed by the City Council every five years? So, I just want to know, like, what do you mean by that?
It's on the table. It's not in the package.
It's on the table.
It's on the table. It looks like this, two pages.
It's not on the back. Councila LaPlante, just a quick comment or perhaps, what do you, I just want to know what you thought behind that part that you says, this fee should be reviewed by the City Council every five years?
Sure.
After enacted? So, is that means that just going to be reviewing every five years, or anytime that the City Council would like?
Certainly, the Council can do it at any time, but the recommendation in this ordinance is to review it every five years, only because times change. We may need to tweak it a little bit. That's the idea behind it. Maybe we don't think it's important anymore. Maybe we want to reduce it. I don't know. Whatever the Council is, in five years can make that decision, or earlier, if the Council determines it's an earlier.
So, do you mind making that a little clear, that it is every five years or when the Council decide?
At very least, five years.
At very least, five years. Can you add that on the public hearing? Is that correct? But my Councila LaPlante, does what you want?
At the very least. Yeah, that works, yeah.
Yeah, at the very least.
Oh, I'm sorry. Wouldn't be, well, I suppose at the very most, rather, it would be. No later than five years. There we go. I will change that.
At any time.
Anytime, but no later than five years.
Yeah, just clarify that.
I will make that change.
Counselors, any questions in regard to this, just to order a public hearing?
Council President?
Councila Del Rosario.
At the committee, I said, honestly speaking, after what we've been through, every winter, and I know Councila LaPlante wants to be a little bit considered, but $50, up and up $25 into this ticket, which it looks like every ticket in the city only costs $25. What we've been through, when we spend, when we go out to clean, the Asher Street, the headaches and everything, $50 is not enough. It should be a little higher.
Well, we should remember, Counselor, that what we're hoping to do, what this, the purpose of this is, and we had a very mild winter, but normally, what should happen is that they will get a $50 ticket, they will get their car towed, they will pay for storage, they will pay for the tow, they'll pay for everything. The problem right now is that we didn't have enough tow trucks to tow everybody, nor ticketers. So, what would happen is if you parked on the wrong side of the road and you didn't move, you looked out in the snow and you said, $25, what do I care? I'll just keep it there all night. Now, the plows can't get in, and the snow can't be removed. So, it's, you don't want it too much more because in a perfect world, this 50 is the minimum. They should be getting 50 plus a tow plus everything. So, this is just maybe the people that look out there and say, I don't want to move my car to the other side of the road. $50 is a little more than 25.
Just for the sake of the discussion, Attorney Newton, the, what the citizens town, what they do is they maintain the violation, the parking violation has $25. And if they have a, if they have a snow, there's no emergency violation, and then they act upon having another ticket, perhaps, and this is how it played out. If your ticket, if your car is being towed, they can hit you with either or. And what citizens town do is that they maintain the $25 at that moment because the car is being towed, and that going to be a lot more. And if the car is not being towed, and then they act upon having a ticket that perhaps is $100, that's one of the stories that I have seen, and so am I reading in other places. So, that's basically the difference between the two types of tickets. And then the ticket person can act upon giving that at that moment. Essentially, when they get towed, they just get the minimum fine.
As I've always said in the past, and I'll say again, I'm sure you're tired of it, I'm not the advocate for or against, I'm just explaining.
I got you.
Feel free to amend whatever you like. I'm just here to make it legal.
I don't know when I lost the floor, but I think I got it. Once again, with all the consideration, $50 at least, and also, it's good to clarify that when a car is towed in the city, the city only gets $25. The city only gets $25. The towing truck gets all the money. If it's $300 or whatever they charge, the city only gets a ticket that is $25. That's all the city gets. You got to bring it out there because people think the city is making lots of money. So, when it comes to that, once again, $50 is what the city is going to get regardless of how many cars we tow. $50 per car. And it's not, it's not to make a profit, it's to...
To make the snow removal so much easier.
So much easier because it's cost the city a lot of money. And some of it is not clean, and then all constituents are out there calling us, bashing us, telling that the city is not working, but the city goes out to do the work, and there's tons of cars parked in there. Again, $50, I don't know you call it how you guys feel, but I will leave my car outside three snowing day for $50 ticket. If I, I mean, if I don't need to move it. And that's what people are taking. People say, well, I'm going to pay the... So, we should consider a little bit higher, whatever you think it is, but $50, and then to revise, and, I mean, I know there's no storm next year or this year coming up, and we're going to revise it.
Council Del Rosario, you can propose a higher up, and then you can see how the Counselors feel.
Sure.
Can we just, can we order the public hearing, have the public hearing, and then take amendments at that point? This is before us right now.
If we order the public hearing with $50, and then people might decide not to come, but if it is something higher, then they will say, I need to go and say something.
Typically, this is very unusual. When we order a public hearing, we typically allow the Counselor who offers something to let it go before a public hearing, and then typically, we amend it when it comes back.
Once again, I don't know when I lost the floor, but thank you.
Council Del Rosario still have the floor.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council President. I'm awesome.
You don't want to make an amendment? Okay, no problem. Counselors, any other questions? We open for questions. It's very untypical, but that's typical doesn't mean that is, this is how it should be.
I'm just here.
We have the discussion, and at any point, the Council can make an amendment.
Sure.
So, that's how it is. Counselors, any questions in regard to this item? So, this motion is to order the public hearing, and the public hearing will be as presented with the amendment when it comes to the language, right? No questions on this? At this point, I'll call the questions. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Let's move on.
Thank you, Counselors. Have a good night.
Thank you. Going on top of the agenda, no Public Safety Committees, not Economic Development Committee, not Committee of the Hall Report, all business, we have none. So, we're going to go now to public hearings. So, we have two public hearings. Madam Clerk, could you please read the public hearings? For the public hearing for item 38324 and 56024.
The, I know what was published is not this, but, notice is hereby given that the Lawrence City Council will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, March 18th, 2025, at 7:00 PM in City Council Chambers, 200 Common Street, Lawrence, Mass. Pursuant to Chapter 2, the Acts of 2023, and in accordance with recently revised City Council Rule 2, this meeting will be hybrid, allowing participation both in person and remotely, to accommodate any participant with health considerations that prevent them from participating in person. Access codes for most participation shall be available from the City Clerk, Ileane D'Onnell, at cityoflawrence.com, 9786203230. Meeting is also available on Facebook and YouTube. The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendment to the revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence, to be further amended by adding the following new paragraphs to Section 10.36.010 of the Municipal Code, "No Parking," to be inserted in the proper alphabetical order. Document number 383-24 is Canton Street, North Side, between High Street and Prospect Street. Document 560-24, Shattuck Street, North Side, from South Broadway to Row Street, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM, Monday through Friday. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on those two items? Any of those two items? I hear none. Public hearing is now closed. Counselors, are we going to entertain motions for item 38324, "No Parking" on Canton Street, one on the right side? What is the motion?
Motion to approve.
There is a motion to approve. Can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item 56024?
Motion to waive the preamble?
No, 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 we're not there yet. Nope, nope. We have to take a vote of item 56024 first. Item 56024? No, we're not. We just read the public hearing, we have two items on that, and we need to take a vote on each individual one. We haven't approved item 560, but we read the public hearing for that, correct? Yes. So, item 56024, "No Parking" on 37 Shattuck Street, between 5:00 AM to 5:00 PM. What is the motion, Counselors? Huh? With the no parking on the public hearing. Item 56024? There is a motion to approve. Properly second, discussion.
Discussion.
Counselor Vice President Infante?
Thank you. I would like Council Del Rosario to amend his motion and add to waive the 30 days.
Motion amended.
Motion has been amended to waive the 30 days. Discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. The ayes have it. Item, Madam, Madam Clerk, please read the public hearing for item four twenty-two twenty-three, five eighty-eight twenty-four, five eighty-nine twenty-four, three twenty-five, four twenty-five, five twenty-five, six twenty-five, and seven twenty-five. And Counselors, now it's in order to actually get a motion to waive the preamble. Do you want to make the motion?
Motion to waive the preamble.
There's a motion to waive the preamble. Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather...
Motion passed, second.
Oh, there's a motion passed, then, properly second. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. You may continue.
The purpose of this hearing is to gather testimony, information, and public input concerning the proposed amendments to revised ordinances of the City of Lawrence to be further amended by adding the following sub-paragraphs to Section ten point thirty-six point three four zero of the Municipal Code, Handicap Parking, in the proper alphabetical order. Document number four twenty-two dash twenty-three, High Street, West Side, from a point two hundred and thirty-six feet south of Grove Street to a point two hundred and fifty-six feet south of Grove Street. Document number five eighty-eight twenty-four, Lawrence Street, East Side, from a point one hundred and forty-two feet north of Arlington Street to a point one hundred and sixty-two feet north of Arlington Street. Document number five eighty-nine dash twenty-four, Farley Street, North Side, from a point one hundred and twenty-three feet east of Brookfield Street to a point one hundred and forty-three feet east of Brookfield Street. Document number three dash twenty-five, Butler Street, North Side, from a point fifty feet east of Lynch Street to a point seventy feet east of Lynch Street. Document number four dash twenty-five, Chester Street, Northwest Side, from a point one hundred and eighty feet southwest of Clifton Street to a point two hundred feet southwest of Clifton Street. Document number five dash twenty-five, Salem Street, South Side, from a point two hundred and sixty-three feet east of Newton Street to a point two hundred and eighty-three feet east of Newton Street. Document number six dash twenty-five is Wells Street, East Side, from a point twenty-eight feet north of the beginning of Wells Street to a point forty-eight feet north of the beginning of Wells Street. And document seven dash twenty-five, Abbott Street, North Side, from a point twenty feet west of Parker Street to a point forty feet west of Parker Street. Persons wishing to be heard shall be afforded the opportunity.
Public hearing is now open. Anybody from the public that wishes to speak on any of this parking lots, parking, handicap parking? I hear none. Nobody from the public. At this time, public hearing is now closed. Counselors, what's the motion? I will entertain motion individually for each one of those, or we can take a motion to approve it all as a package, or discuss it all as a package.
Motion to approve as a pack, as a package, and waive the thirty days.
There is a motion to approve item four twenty-two twenty-three, which is handicap parking at two thirty, two thirty-four High Street. Item five eighty-eight twenty-four, which is handicap parking at three fifty-nine Lawrence Street. Item three eighty-nine, which is handicap parking at seventy-one Furley Street. Item three twenty-five, item, location seventeen Butler Street. Items four twenty-five, location one, one hundred and eleven A, Chester Street. Item five twenty-five, two forty-eight Salem Street. Item two six, six twenty-five, thirty Wall Street. Item seven twenty-five, one forty-three Parker Street. That's been, the motion is to take it as a block and approve... Discussion. And waive the thirty days. Counsel La Plante.
Yeah, so just a very quick observation, I think there's one, two, three, I think there's seven handicap parking, things we're going to be voting on tonight. I'm going to predict that this is going to pass. I believe it strongly, this is going to pass, all seven are going to pass. And the point I'm trying to make here is that we are, I've never seen so many handicap parking situations in our city. We are going through a huge spike of those. I don't know what's going on in our population. I don't know if it's because we have a shortage of housing, or people are truly in need, if it's a greater need than ever before. I don't know the reasons why, but we should be taking this into account, I think, as we start dealing with parking issues throughout the city, that this is becoming, I'm not saying we shouldn't be having handicap, please don't misunderstand me, but I'm saying this is becoming a bit of an issue with respect to the lack of parking across the board. So I'll be supporting it tonight, don't worry about that, but we should be thinking about that at some level as well. Thank you.
Right. Madam Clerk, just to respond to Counsel La Plante, do we have everybody's handicap placard? Check.
Yeah, we do, yes. Council President, we do require a handicap placard to file an application.
Counsel President.
Counselor De Rosario.
We need to call physicians and let them know how hard the parking is, so they, I mean, the HIPAA law prohibits us to ask questions if they really need it, as soon as they actually provide a placard, we just need to go with it. So, but we'll be, we'll keep it in mind and see how that, but the HIPAA law actually even prohibits us to ask them questions about that. But let's go through it.
Counsel President.
Counsel Lozano.
So why do we have to vote for handicaps parking in the City Council? If we can add, my question is, in face of the comments that my colleagues have made, why do we have to vote or actually deal with this item? I think items for handicap parking should go to DPW. I mean, if they're going to get approved regardless, they should go to DPW, because I mean, we spend a lot of time voting on something that we cannot even deny. Just, just my opinion. So it should go to DPW. They should do this job.
At this point, I'll call the questions. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it.
So what happened with that commission that needed to be approved? That commission that was working on to be somehow put it together so they, we're going to pass it, do we have anything on it?
We can provide an update next week.
What I can do real quick is that, that's before Richard Rodriguez, right now, in the Disability Commission, and he's working on trying to get that over to us, so stay tuned, is the answer.
All right, Counselors, there is any table matters that we're not, we need an update for today?
Yes, Counsel President.
Counselor...
Counsel.
We have a couple of items that were presented in front of us for withdrawal. Are we considering those tonight?
Yes, some, some order we are waiting for response from the people who put the items.
Ana Lévick, do we, you, we have a couple of things that do, that I don't believe we have answers on some, some of them we do have answers. Can you clarify?
Yes, that is what I said, there are some items that we already had the answer, and some other we are waiting for.
Okay, so do you mind going over the one that we have answers to?
Yes, so we send correspondent to the Police Department, the Mayor of the City of Lawrence, the Community Developments, the Lawrence Housing Authority, and also to Ms. Birma Martinez, we send, corresponded to all of them. And you all guys received also an email from, from the City Clerk, telling you all the item that are for removal or for withdrawal. So I'm going to start with item two twenty-one. Do you want me to send all of the items?
Need a, we need a motion to withdraw.
Okay, so motion to withdraw is, I don't know, let me see, how many? One, two...
No, 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 no. We had to be individually, Counsel Levick.
Okay, so motion to withdraw item two twenty-one seventeen, this is a stop sign, intersection of Andover and Foster Street, that was by Vice President at that time, by President La Plante.
All right, there is a motion to withdraw item two twenty-one seventeen.
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, to withdraw, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item three fifty-five eighteen.
The three fifty-five eighteen is Arlington Street, one-way, thirty minutes for, from three P.M. to three thirty P.M. in front of the Arlington School, and that was by Mayor Counsel De Peña.
All right, there is a motion to withdraw item three fifty-five eighteen, and it is, can you hear a second? Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item two forty-three nineteen.
Item two forty-three nineteen is the request to display and serve product one twenty-seven, one twenty-seven South Union Street, Tropical Mini Market Core, that was by Isidro Polo, Isidro Polo, and also by Mayor De Peña, and it's been confirmed for withdrawal.
Second.
There is a motion on the table, properly second, discussion. It is important to recognize that somebody emailed the mayor, the mayor's, the mayor's staff, and, the mayor's staff, and they confirmed to withdraw. Any questions? I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? The ayes have it. Item three fifteen nineteen.
Three fifteen nineteen, one-side parking only on Sunset Avenue, that was also by, at that time, Counselor De Peña, Mayor, right now, and it's been confirmed for withdrawal.
Can you hear, there is a motion on the table. Properly second, discussion.
Discussion.
Counsel La Plante.
Real quick, I just, before I forget, I just want to compliment, I guess, the counselor to my left for the work that she and whoever else is assisting, my colleague, on these matters.
The City Clerk.
And the City Clerk, so thank you. So I think it's really important that we do this. I think it's really important, and frankly, I think we should be withdrawing all of them, because at some point, my opinion, because other, as I mentioned maybe several meetings ago, there's a, some of the councils weren't even on the council when some of these were introduced, number one, and number two, if we're talking about transparency, and if we're talking about being open with people, we could pull any document up at any time that was introduced back ten years ago, and no warning, it's on there, and it's the right thing to do is to take this off, take it everything off, and if you feel strongly about it, reintroduce it and then take ownership of it. Thank you.
That was the rule that we actually worked on not that long ago, so every item will be withdrawn at the beginning of the, of the, of the new council. Item, well, we have a motion, properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item three sixty-seven nineteen, No Parking on Tenney Street.
And Leah and Tenney Street to Arlington Street, that was also by Mayor Dan Rivera and President at that time, Vasquez.
All right, there is a, this question, there is, there's a motion on the table, can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye. The ayes have it. Item seventy-seven twenty.
Appropriation transfer, Resident Legal Assistant Fund from Mayor De Peña, Mayor Rivera.
All right, can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item two eighteen twenty.
Tenon Parking only on Seventeen Armistree Apartment Three, that was by Elizabeth Ramon, ready for withdrawal.
All right, there's a motion on the table, can you hear a second? Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item four thirty, twenty-two.
Estasica Medallion Transfer, from Manuel Arias, Liberty Taxi, and Todelio Azvia Peña Popular Taxi, that was confirmed by today Chief Meli Bonilla.
All right, can, there is a motion on the, can you make that?
Yes, for the withdrawal.
There is a motion on the table, can you hear a second?
Second.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item five five twenty-three.
So Declaration of Soul Plus, confirmed by Community Developments, Declaration of Soul Property, seventy-four eighty-six, Miro Street, Math one forty-nine Lot Zero Dash Thirty-eight.
Counsel Levick, there is fifty-five, fifty-six, there are the same, the same, oh, no, there are not the same lot, sorry.
Fifty-five twenty-three, yes.
Sorry, there's a motion on the table, can you hear a second? Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it. Item fifty-six twenty-three.
Fifty-six twenty-three, Declaration of Soul Property, twenty-four twenty-six, Dorham Street, Math one twenty, Law one, Law nineteen, also confirmed by Community Development.
There's a motion on the table, can you hear a second?
For withdrawal, yes.
Properly second, discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye.
Aye.
The ayes, any ayes? The ayes have it. Item eighty-nine twenty-four.
Eighty-nine twenty-four, Newberry Street and Garden Street, Math eighty-seven, Law seven, Declaration of Soul Property, that was by Chalene Pasquale, and it was confirmed by her for withdrawal.
There's a motion on the table, properly second. Second, Paco de Reyes, thank you. Discussion. I hear none. Olos and Feo, please say aye. The ayes have it.
Counsel President, there are some other item that we are waiting for response.
All right, thank you so much. So now we are going to new business. New business. Item ninety-five twenty-five, confirm reappointment of William Collins at the Municipal Airport Commission. This is going to the personal committee. Item ninety-six twenty-five, confirm the reappointment of Sharon Virchals to the Municipal Airport, Municipal Airport Commission, this is going to the personal committee. Item ninety-seven twenty-five, confirm the appointment of Xavier Ortiz to the Municipal Airport Commission, this is going to the personal committee. Item ninety-eight twenty-five, confirm appointment of Dios, Diosio Cruz to the Municipal Airport Commission, this is going to, this is going to the personal committee. Item ninety-nine twenty-five, No Parking Zones at Blanch, Blanchard Street, West Side, from Farham to Property Line, this is going to the, I mean, this is going to ordinance committee. Item one hundred twenty-five, Resident Parking Only, Washington Street, from Manchester to Lake Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh one twenty-five, Resident Parking Only, Lake Street to Lake Street, this is going to ordinance committee. Item one oh two twenty-five, American Taxes, Renewal Taxes Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh three twenty-five, Liberty Taxes Inc., Renewal Taxes Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh four twenty-five, Popular Taxes Corporation LLC, Renewal Taxes Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh five twenty-five, Mary Mac Taxes Corp., Renewal, Renewal of Taxes Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh six twenty-five, Five Star Express and Treatations LLC, Renewal of Taxes and Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh seven twenty-five, Rioondo Transportation LLC, Renewal of Taxes and Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh eight twenty-five, Alang M. Transportation LLC, Renewal of Taxes and Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one oh nine twenty-five, New York City United Express Inc., Renewal of Taxes and Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. One ten twenty-five, Town Liberty Inc., Town Liberty Inc., Renewal of Taxes and Liberty License, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one eleven twenty-five, Handicap Parking Forty-three M. Street, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one twelve twenty-five, Handicap Parking Forty-four Tremont Street, ordinance committee. Item one thirteen twenty-five, Handicap Parking Twenty-two Linden Street, ordinance committee. One fourteen twenty-five, Brinkway, Five Gate, August eleven, twenty twenty-five, seven A.M. to one P.M., Manchester Street Park, and Nuchionde Market Park, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one fifteen twenty-five, Preaching Event, July seventeen and eighteen, twenty twenty-five, from five P.M. to seven P.M. at the O'Connor Park, this is going to the ordinance committee. Item one sixteen twenty-five, Approval of Alterations of, of On Street Parking Plant and Around the Henry K. Oliver School, this is going to the ordinance committee. At this time, we're going to entertain different committees' dates and the schedule, ordinance committee.
Twenty-fifth, it's next Tuesday, and seven o'clock ordinance.
Budget and finance. No meetings. Personal.
Monday, the twenty-fourth at seven.
Housing. No items. Economic development. All right, we have all the dates, and now we're going to entertain a motion to, motion adjourned? Motion adjourned. There's a motion to adjourn, properly second, discussion. There's none. All those in favor please say aye. Any names? The ayes have it. Thank you.